Seven o'clock, but I'm seeing people slowly trickle in, so we'll give a couple more minutes here before returning to our meeting and diving into the agenda this evening. All right, it's a little after seven here, and for those who read the agenda, we had an executive session at six, so this meeting has actually already been called to order, but Miranda, if you would just call the role of the trustees again to see if everyone has returned from dinner break.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Kums Ismael. I'll come back. Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yep.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yeah.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
And trustee Kums Ismael.
Yes.
And please note for the record that trustee Appen and trustee Taylor are absent.
All right, moving on, we have a number of items on our consent agenda this evening. Does anyone have any questions regarding or questions or comments regarding anything on the consent agenda?
I think they just said you're absent.
No, looks good.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, motion and second. Miranda, if you would please read the or call the vote.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismael.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yeah.
This is Alan Appen. I'm on the call.
Oh.
And trustee App, do you approve the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, welcome, Alan. You must be calling user four.
I guess.
I did want to point out that in the consent agenda, you can see here that we have a proclamation this month, so I'd like to officially read this proclamation into the record. This is a town of Nederland, Boulder County, Colorado proclamation. Whereas each May, the Federal Administration for Community Living leads the National Celebration of Older Americans Month. And whereas this year's theme is Communities of Strength, recognizing the important role older adults play in fostering the connection and engagement to build strong, resilient communities. Whereas the town of Nederland is committed to helping all individuals maintain their health and independence in later life. And whereas the older adults in the town of Nederland have an important role in sharing knowledge, wisdom, and understanding of the history of our community through interactions with children, youth, and adults from other generations. And whereas the fruits of knowledge and experience can be effectively transferred from generation to generation through meaningful social interactions. And whereas their interactions with family, friends, and neighbors across generations enrich the lives of everyone involved. And whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich citizens, young and old, by emphasizing the value of including elders in public and family life, creating opportunities for older Americans to interact with people of different generations, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow older adults to participate in social activities in the community. Now, therefore, we of the town of Nederland do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month, adopted and approved this 18th day of May 2021. Well, thank you, everyone, for approving that proclamation. I always like when we get to do those, and I know we've got some others coming up in coming months. But moving on to our agenda is to public comment on non-agenda items. We have several. We have a couple of P items in the packet, and particularly I want to call out and highlight the the pack or the PDF that's in here on how to prepare your home for wildfire and creating defensive space that was provided by the town fire marshal, Rick Hendrickson. This is definitely the time of year we should all be working on mitigating our properties and preparing for the later fire season, and I know it's something that we've been working on here at our house and have a lot more work to do, but it's the time of year to get on top of that. So thank you, Rick, for highlighting that and putting it into our packet and getting it in front of everyone. If there's anyone else who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be your chance. Please raise your hand, jump on the video, speak up, somehow catch our attention, and you can have just three minutes to speak on a non-agenda item.
Mayor, I would like to just make a comment on that PDF.
Please, Rick, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Identify yourself for the recording for those who don't know your voice.
I'm sorry, it's Rick Hendrickson, Fire Marshal with the Nederland Fire Protection District. We've gotten a big break here the last couple of months with a lot of moisture, and it's pretty wet out right now, and that'll probably hold us over for a couple of months, I hope, before we start seeing fire danger, you know, start to pop back up. But like the mayor said, this is a great time to get out and get some work done. The new pamphlet that just came out from the state is really good, has a couple of more recent pictures in it. They've really taken what they had in the past and upgraded it a bunch, and I think they've done a really good job. So if you get a chance, take a look through that, you'll see. Oh, there's one good picture in there from Cold Springs Fire and a couple from 416 Fire down in Durango from a couple of years ago. And good information on lodge pole thinning, which is always kind of a question as to how to do that without having them all fall down after you thin. So it's worth a look and appreciate having a minute to talk here. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else? I'm not seeing or hearing any. We will move forward into our action items this evening, the first of which is an SRU, a public hearing for an SRU. And I believe I see the individuals online, so being in a public hearing, I have a little script I get to read, so bear with me for a moment as we launch this. The town, Town of Nederland, is currently operating under a state of emergency order issued by the Town Board of Trustees related to COVID-19 and are meeting virtually to ensure public safety. Based on that finding, the Board of Trustees has agreed to hear quasi-judicial matters in the virtual meeting space and in accordance with the telephonic electronic meeting participation policy during times of emergency as amended on April 16, 2020. Before we begin this public hearing, I would like to ask the members of the Board of Trustees if any of them have a conflict of interest in hearing this matter tonight. A conflict of interest is a financial interest in the matter or a personal or private interest in this matter. I will give the members of the Board of Trustees an opportunity to speak up now to disclose any conflicts. I also want to ask if all the members of the Board of Trustees can be fair and impartial in hearing this application. If you don't believe you can be fair or impartial, or if you have prejudged this application, please speak up now. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of considering the special review use application related to an outdoor patio for the Knotted Root Brewing Company located at 250 North Caribou Street and submitted by Chris Martio, the representative for Neverland Real Estate Holdings LLC. Miranda, would you please introduce and present your report?
Absolutely. So as Mayor Larson noted, tonight before you is an application to construct an outdoor patio at Knotted Root Brewing Company. So the zoning for this property is general commercial, and what they are proposing to do falls under outdoor sales, eating and drinking, or other commercial activities or establishments. In the, Chris goes over, Chris Martio goes over more information in the application itself, and I'm just going to give a overview. Well, one thing that I think is important to note is that Knotted Root has had an outdoor patio since June of 2020. Under the emergency order related to COVID, we were able to issue temporary modification of premise. And for them, that included the patio space that they're requesting be made permanent, so it is that space north of their building. I think I wanted to point this out in that, again, they've had it for almost a year, and I've had really no complaints. There have been concerns about parking, which I'll get into momentarily, but generally it allowed them to have a year to really test this space and see if it worked, and I think that they've been very successful in doing so, and you'll see that also in their numerous letters of support as well as their petition. But some information for you to consider, I mean, reviewing the code, again, this type of use is allowed under general commercial. It is a predominantly residential neighborhood, but given that they're zoning, they can have their business. They've been in operation since July 2019. For their request, it would be, I would allow for a space where people could go out and consume their beer outdoors. So in reviewing the special review use, some things that came up were in regards to parking. So currently, per code, Knotted Root needs to have 20 parking spaces. They actually have 31 to 32, depending on how they park onsite, as well as 24 to 26 that could be offsite. Again, we have received some minor complaints about parking, and I will tell you the Knotted Root team has done a phenomenal job with just being creative and how to address that. In the application, you see photos which show that if arranged correctly, their parking can really work. They have a parking attendant. They have it sectioned off so that people are definitely lining up in a way that works for their lot. They've been in communication with the Presbyterian Church as well as the community center. And so whenever there were concerns about parking, the applicant and his team has been more than accommodating to work with town staff to address those areas. The proposal is to build a patio that would be enclosed by a wooden fence. There would be an exit for that for emergency purposes. There would be string lighting that's really downward lighting system, so not to provide too much lighting there that's disruptive to the neighborhood. And that lighting would be turned off when the patio is closed. The goal would be ideally to construct this either this month or next month. And in the application, and in the applicant's narrative, he goes over how he complies with the comprehensive plans. To speak to that. And talking with police department and fire department, really minimal concerns. Rick Hendrickson had noted that there is not an occupancy issue, since this is outside the building. Only concern might be that if in extreme weather events patrons try to seek shelter, it would be asked to go to their cars, meaning they would need to leave behind their alcoholic beverages or their beer behind in the fence area. But that would obviously be in those unique circumstances, they couldn't enter into the building just from an occupancy issue. So I think that that's kind of the bulk of staff presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or Mayor Larson, if you'd like, we can turn it over to Chris to kind of speak more to their plan.
Yeah, let's first give an opportunity for any of the Board of Trustees who have clarifying questions for Miranda, just on the material she presented. So this is we'll have a chance later for deliberation in your, our opinions, but this is just anything that Miranda just laid out, if you have questions about that. Beginning with Tanya.
I do not have any questions. She was very clear. Thank you.
Okay, Lindsay.
No questions at this time.
Jonathan?
No questions.
Eric?
No questions.
All right, Alan?
No questions.
All right, no questions here either. So we will bring in, I, is it, Chris, are you going to be presenting?
Hello, can you, can you guys hear me and see me?
Yep, we can hear you, so please just introduce yourself and then let us know your side, your, your take on this project.
I do have my camera up. I'm not sure if I need it, but just wondering. Am I, can you guys see me? Am I too close? I don't know.
No, no, we can see it. We appreciate the camera. It's always just a case of whether or not your bandwidth can handle it, and I'll let you know if you start breaking up and we start losing the audio.
I am in Lewisville, so I got good city internet down here. But yeah, first off, I just want to thank Miranda for that introduction. And I want to thank the board for gathering and hearing this application. We here at Knotted Roots are excited at this prospect. It has certainly been an interesting time running a business as a destination brewery in the mountains. And even though it has presented some challenges, we're thankful that we have done extremely well during this time. And we are, you know, excited at the prospect of responsibly growing our taproom footprint and being able to take advantage of some of the beautiful surroundings that our area has to offer. And we really do believe that we have put in the time and effort and done our homework to make sure this is as copacetic with the neighborhood, the community as a whole, and being able to maximize our our business prospects as much as we can. So are there any particular sections or any things that you guys have questions about or anything that I can specifically address?
Yeah, we'll open this up to board questions. I'll kick it off here with one that just comes to mind real quick, because I know there were drawings in the packet of the size of the patio, but I'm much more of a visual guy, and knowing kind of what the current size of the patio is, how does it relate? You know, the kind of the area that's marked off by the chain or the tape right now, how does that relate to the planned size of the patio?
I'm pretty much exactly the same. The only difference is that right now, we've been, you know, we've been hesitant to make certain investments into the patio such as really sufficient drainage, such as a permanent industrial fence, grading. We want to install a French, a French drain. All of this costs a decent amount of money, so, you know, we wanted to make sure we could do this permanently before we did that. And what we've had to offer has been a great interim. But yeah, the footprint is pretty much the same minus our property goes towards the west a little more than the actual kind of natural property boundary would appear. So we have a survey that puts us about four feet or four feet or so to the west, kind of on the west-north side of our property that would be adjacent to the former Little Bear location and the future condo development that would be next of us. But essentially, we need to widen that a little bit to make sure our French drain is effective. Plus, we also want to make a clear border between us and that development and maximize on our property. But other than that little bit of widening, we will be exactly where we are currently, just much more aesthetically pleasing and functional with drainage.
All right, thank you. I'm going to kick this off to trustees with their questions, beginning with trustee App.
Hello, Chris. How are you doing tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
I want to congratulate you on the success of your business.
Thank you so much.
I was wondering, I was reading the minutes from the planning commission, and I thought I said something where it said you were going to apply for noise ordinance variances for major events. And I wondered what that meant.
So for example, our our yearly anniversary falls on the quite, quite busy July 4 holiday. So for example, during that holiday, we might, we'll typically release two to three beers a week, on average, two. For example, on a holiday, we might release four, five. We're with the local potter to do some mugs, t-shirts, and just some extra, you know, celebratory merchandise item and special that you add with the celebratory nature of the the anniversary party plus July 4. We are anticipating people normal, and we would do it for that. And, you know, with that, or even some other minor events outside. If we can, some acoustic music in the afternoon, and we're also very certain this acoustic would be beyond the edge of where we would be legally, but, you know, it wouldn't vary, but make sure that that legal and that we can give our neighbors a proper notice. And this, you know, would be done to prepare and just make sure that we are confident that we can reduce the noise but still be protected. But, you know, this would really mostly be yearly from a, from an anniversary standpoint. We don't have any intention of hosting regular outside music, especially regular outside electrified music. And, you know, we want to be able to utilize that that's had a couple.
Hey, Chris. I just want to say you're, you're breaking up pretty badly in your audio. We could hear you, but just, yeah, thanks. Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah. I just turned off your video. Yes, so Chris, it's, it's now, I would just keep that off.
Yep. So Alan, you had more questions?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up question on the music. You say acoustic, would that be amplified or just, you know, like someone on an acoustic guitar playing without amplification?
You guys hear me now?
I can't hear anything. Could you hear me okay?
I can hear you okay now. Would you mind repeating that? I think my video is off, so.
I think Alan was asking for clarification on when you say acoustic music, is that amplified acoustic, or are we thinking a guy on a guitar, you know, a corner pick or something?
I haven't really defined that. Hopefully, for something like an anniversary party, we could have a small amplification. But, you know, this would be a nice to have. The majority of what we would do is just be able to host a quiet outdoor space. And for the non-amplification, maybe a bluegrass pick or something like that. That's kind of what we're thinking.
Okay. Yeah, I know people in the neighborhood are concerned about amplified music, but don't have any problems with acoustic music.
Yeah, I think they would be more concerned about having like a full band rocking out there into the evening. But we have a great relationship with our neighbors, and when we have done light music outside, many of them have come over to support it and listen. So we're certainly not, you know, they're very much in consideration, and, you know, acoustic music to be able to offer some background stuff, support some musicians, and offer some entertainment is, is what we're thinking.
Yeah, I think acoustic guitar makes a lot of sense. It's, you know, you get into amplification, then, you know, a lot of times when you're far away, all you can hear is you, you can't really hear except the noise. Whereas, you know, I think if you're on site, it sounds fun. I just, I would just have concerns about amplification. Whereas, you know, acoustic guitar, bluegrass picks, without amplification, I think is fine, according to what my neighbors have have said to me.
Absolutely.
And I live, I live about a half a mile away. But, you know, I do think the patio is, I press an opinion early, but the patio is a great idea.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay.
Look at this house in Boulder. It's almost like it makes Netherlands look like it's like cheaper than Ned.
Thank you on an open mic there, Tanya. Trustee Kums Ismael?
Yeah, I just saw on the site plan that there was, that there were parking spaces marked, and I was wondering if the patio project was going to include any more kind of designated parking beyond the cones that, that you guys have out there now, like are there going to be wheel stops or signage for designating parking more precisely, or are we going to stick with the attendant and parking cone method?
Um, you know, for us right now, we're thinking about the attendant and cone method. Really, I don't know how familiar you are, you are with our lot, but we have a couple of funky areas that go from a little raised to a little ditch to below. It's dirt, kind of uneven territory. There's a culvert on the edge of our property, and that borders town property that people kind of park along. And for us, especially during the winter, which is the majority of the year for us, making sure we can plow, that really does eliminate or complicate the notion of having parking blocks or any kind of set signs. Though, you know, we're not opposed to exploring certain options that might be able to be tweaked. But for us, we've really found on our busiest weekends, which, you know, we're consistently busy, but when we really, really need it, we kind of plan ahead, so we're taken care of no matter what, but especially if we are that busy, a parking attendant can really help people do things like park close to one another. So in other words, you've been to parking lots where people can park four or five feet apart. You get that down a row, and you're losing two or three. You get that down a row and you're losing two or three parking spaces that you could utilize if people had otherwise parked close. So having that parking attendant and the ability to regulate that on-site, I think is very beneficial. And also utilizing the church parking lots and on even bigger events, if need be, the community center as a alternative and backup parking, we could physically tell patrons that this is where you can park if our lot is full. And it gives us more control and, you know, execution of our lot as opposed to just leaving it up for people to figure it out, which if we're not that busy is fine. But really, on Saturdays and certain events, we do want to be able to make sure we can maximize it and do it responsibly and safely. So that is our plan for now, is to make sure we have hands on deck to physically regulate this during busy weekends.
I understand. Thank you. Yeah, I was just more, just trying to clarify that site plan, which designated spaces, and wonder if there's gonna be any construction in the parking kind of areas. But it sounds like it's gonna stay as it is and you're gonna use the cones and the attendant to manage the parking. So thanks, thanks for that clarification.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Baumhoffer.
I got no questions. Honestly, when it comes down to knotted root, I think this is a very successful business in our community that's bringing a lot of interest to our community. And from what I've seen, I know parking has been an issue, but the owner has worked, from what I've heard, very closely with our local police department and are working through those issues in very, very close communication with their neighbors. So from what I've seen, I really don't have any issues with this request. And I'd like to see it go through and allow us to let the owner work with the property owners on Third Street as well as other folks to find the best solution. But I think what's before us is reasonable. And from what I've seen over the past two years, there's a need for it and would actually bring a benefit to this community, so.
Jonathan? Trustee Danforth, any questions for Chris?
No questions at this time, but just wanna thank Chris for everything he's done to keep his business open during the pandemic and, and keep people flowing into this town. It always seems like your, your business is packed. So I think that's, that's been good for us to keep tourists coming up here. And I remember a couple of years ago on the planning commission, you had brought this before everybody and there was some pushback in the neighborhood about, you know, sound and, and everything like that. And I think the pandemic has served you well, so you've had your temporary patio out there. And from what I saw with those letters of support, some of those neighbors who initially had been against this seemed to be in favor of it now. So I think, I think this has been good and I'm glad you're moving forward with it this time. And I think that's, that's all I have to say at the moment.
Thank you.
Tanya, any questions for Chris?
I do not. The agenda packet was very thorough and I don't have any questions. I thank Chris again for coming and I also think it's a great business and best of luck with the patio construction if this passes.
All right. We do want to be able to take public comment. This is a public hearing, so, and I do see a lot of people dialed in who may be here to speak on this. So we're gonna break this out first. If there are any members of the public who would like to speak in favor of the proposal to patio, this will be your chance. Again, kind of raise your hand, catch our attention with the video or just start speaking. And we just ask you to identify yourself and then you can have up to three minutes to speak in favor of the proposal. We'll have a second chance here for those who would like to speak against.
Hello, BOT. This is Wendy Williams. Can you hear me?
Hey, Wendy, welcome.
Well, I own most of the property right across from the brewery and Chris has done a really great job. We are happy neighbors. He's really responded to all of our, any complaint we had when, you know, somebody did something stupid. He was right on it and took care of it. And I think you guys should all support this.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else speaking in favor of the proposal? I see, I thought I saw him. I see a hand going up. Kathleen? You wanna come off mute and speak?
She had emailed the comment. So this is Miranda gonna read it into the record. Kathleen Chippai in favor of passage. That's the comment.
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else? Would there, is anyone out there would like to speak against this proposal? Now would be your chance. I am not hearing or seeing anyone speaking up. So we will close the public comment on the application. Chris, Chris Marchio, now technically you have an opportunity to respond to anything you heard from the public. You'd like to respond to those who spoke in favor of it. Now would be your chance, or we can go to discussion from the BOT.
Well, I just want to say that we really do make an effort to communicate directly with our neighbors and we are not just saying that. We are not just blowing smoke for the sake of making it look good. We are members of this community. We live here. My business partner is raising their child here. We want to do everything we can to make sure this town keeps its quirky character that we all love and that all brought us here to begin with, as well as elevate, no pun intended, to meet, meet our fullest potential. And, you know, we just, we want to do that in a way that improves our neighbors' lives and the town and the community as a whole. So if issues do arise, we will always address them head-on with respect, proactively. And I think this will be a great addition to our business and the town of Nederland.
Thank you, Chris. And I think, yeah, I think to speak for all of us, we really appreciate the steps you've taken. And we can see that in the letters of support that we've seen in the packet and from what we've heard from the community. So really, bring this back to the board of trustees for any further comments or discussion from the board, or if any member of the board would like to make a motion regarding the SRU application before us.
I would just make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion to approve from trustee Corvallin.
I'll second.
I think Jonathan got in there with the second first there, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Miranda?
Yeah, I'd like to do a friend, I'd like to do a friendly amendment. This is Alan.
Okay, Alan, what would you like?
That the condition would be approved with the condition that there'd be no amplified music except for the Fourth of July. Otherwise, acoustic music only.
Hey, hey, Alan, I'll accept that friendly amendment only if the amplified music meets our noise ordinance. I don't, I don't think it's acceptable to hold knotted root to amplified music ordinance that we might not be holding karaburu to. And that is up in the air, but we have an ordinance for noise ordinance. So my belief is that they can have amplified music so long as it does not exceed our current ordinance for a noise ordinance.
Okay.
I'm a little confused.
My concern is that in the planning commission meeting, the applicant said that he might be, it sounded like regularly applying for variance in the noise ordinance. And I think, as Chris described, he's mainly concerned about a Fourth of July celebration. And they're getting a variance for that.
Alan, if I may interject, the noise ordinance is not an application process. And I maybe might have Miranda fully correct me on this, but it is just a permit that you pay for. And to point a full perspective on the noise ordinance in Nederland, I mean, if we were to have a group of a couple of musicians out there playing acoustic music, depending on where you measure, that could be above it. I'm happy to discuss what kind of events would suit the neighborhood's interest. But I would like to be able to explore reasonable, comfortable, especially early afternoon on certain days other than the Fourth of July. But I can also assure you that we are not planning on turning our patio into an electric venue with a stage or anything of that nature. So that is what I can say to that. With that being said, I'm happy to discuss this and work to find an agreement that works for both us and the town, if that's okay.
Yeah, I don't think anybody in the neighborhood would care about acoustic music that wasn't amplified. But if it was amplified on a regular basis, that could be problematic.
Oh, just, just for example, we've had amplified music out there and not applied for a noise ordinance. Black Dog, the local jazz musician, has just plugged in an amp and played very light jazz music. We did not exceed the, the noise ordinance even with that. And if you were to apply for a permit, that gives you the ability to create a little more noise than that. So I'm happy to discuss working within the town, town's noise ordinance and what that means. But we can have very light amplified music as well. So I don't want the term amplification, or I would like to not have the term amplification be maybe the focus, but perhaps decibels and the style of event, if that works for you.
Yeah, I think if you're staying below the ordinance decibel level, that's acceptable.
Well, I think, well, Alan, for starters, if he's staying below the, the noise ordinance, then he could do it every day. What we're discussing is the possibility of a noise variance request for the events. That's what you're concerned about, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you asked, Tanya, it is your motion, so it is up to you on the friendly amendment. You asked a friendly amendment to add that language to the SRU. And just to be clear, I think you're asking that to the SRU be added the language that a noise variance can only be applied for on the Fourth of July?
Correct.
Okay. So Tanya, that would be a, if it's not a friendly amendment, that we could propose amendment and have a separate vote upon that amendment. But Tanya, you have the opportunity to adopt that as a friendly amendment.
I don't really think, I think it's too stringent for me. I mean, I, I've also heard that neighbors can hear people chatting and there could be 100 people out there chatting. And, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't want to add that on to, it's, I'm not in favor of that, let me just put it that way. An amendment that only one day out of the year, we can have amplified music.
Well, it would be a full noise variance.
Right. I think that, I still think that's maybe half a dozen a year. I mean, I don't know, one a year seems a little.
Okay. Yeah. So then the question goes back to, I guess, to Alan, whether or not you want to make a formal motion to amend the SRU.
I think it's reasonable to say that, you know, since they can operate up to the level of the noise ordinance without any problems whatsoever. And if they want to exceed it, better than not be on a regular basis.
Well.
And, you know, so I think what might be proposed, you know, I'd like to propose as a regular amendment.
Okay. I would just, my personal thought on that is, that is not something we've put on other businesses who have done, and I know that, you know, it's a little complicated by the fact that we have, we all know there's another SRU out that we aren't allowed to discuss yet, that is tied to, you know, has a similar theme. But it's not something I think we've done before as a town to try and limit an individual business's ability to apply for noise variances. And it could then be something as a more of a policy decision and procedural decision on how we handle noise variance requests from all businesses. But that is, that's kind of my two cents and thought on this. But if you would like to make a motion to amend the SRU to limit that, that is your opportunity and see, and we could see if there's a second and then a vote.
Can I jump in here real quick, Mayor? I guess, I guess my perspective with this specific business is, I think we're all aware, or maybe we have not had communications with the local police department as much. But since the pandemic has been starting to back off with nice weather, there has been issues with parking in, in this spot. But I think that of anything actually speaks to the, the business owner's willingness to work with surrounding property owners in, in this situation. And I think since this brewery has opened, there's been nothing but a willingness to work with the neighbors, even through PUDs for other developments that are unrelated to their business. They have been very receptive and open and willing to discuss impacts on, on the community. And I honestly, I live here on Third Street, about a block, less than a block away from this establishment. And I personally don't know a single individual between my house and that, that business establishment that is not willing to individually walk up to this business owner and make their complaints or issues known. And I've also seen that regardless of what's required of the BOT or the planning commission, that this individual business owner has gone above and beyond to do whatever he can for the residents around that area. So when, when it comes to a, when it comes to a noise ordinance in the town of Nederland, I think we have to recognize that we have one of the highest decimal levels allowable in our noise ordinance by state of Colorado, even federal levels. And we have done this and recognized it through 15 years of varying BOTs as a recognition of the respect of Ned Local Community and the music culture. So my preference here is not to try to legislate limits based upon a what if this happens and we piss off a neighbor? And I think we should just approve this and put it on the business owner to maintain the quality relationships they have already established with their local residents and maintain that. We need to start to take a little bit of a trust as a BOT to give it to the hands of the business owners to maintain relationships with local residents and not micromanage them. So from this perspective, I guess I would say I see nothing wrong with this. I don't want to adapt the noise ordinance at all. And I think that any residential owner or occupant of rental or owner-occupied house on Third Street would be very glad to go and talk, talk with Chris. And I think Chris would be very, very quick to respond to those things. So I would like to see us as a BOT approve this without any changes or allocations to our noise ordinance and just accept that the business owner themselves will work with the property owners around them. And if they don't, it will be reflected in their profit.
My concern is that, excuse me, I think that's reasonable, except for the fact that, you know, if we have you know, amplified music on a regular basis and residents don't really have a mechanism or say an individual occasion, you're making it the neighborhood's responsibility or, or, you know, a.
You're correct, Alan. I am taking, I am taking the mechanism of residents. You're correct, Alan. And I, I am taking, I am taking the mechanism of residence response out of legislation. And I'm putting it in the realm of social capital. Because I believe that this business owner has proved their willingness to work with the community members. And frankly, as an individual, you all are more than welcome to debate this with me. That I believe that social capital and respect among individuals is a much, much, much better form of, of managing a community than legislation and requirements. And I think that when we look at this business, when we look at the interactions that have happened over the last two years in this business, there is nothing that this BOT could point at that shows an unwillingness to work with social capital. And I get to a problem when it comes to drawing lines in the sand in legislation about ideals that are not defined. I mean, we haven't defined what, what the character of Third Street is. We haven't defined what the character and the ideal of noise ordinance really is. So I guess where I stand is if we have a business owner that has shown a willingness to work with the residents, has shown respect, has shown compromise, that we leave it with that business owner to maintain that. And we don't try to build an ordinance, which is, I hate to say it, but I mean, it's, it's 100% clean and cut. Once we pass an ordinance, you have to follow that no matter what. Whereas if we allow for business owners to work with the residents, we don't create any potential unknown, unforeseen circumstances. What we allow is respect between business owners and residents. And I may be wrong, but I don't know any current resident on Third Street that has any very standing aggression against this business. Nor do I think that if that was the case, that this business owner wouldn't be willing to accommodate it. So I guess what I'm pushing for is less government oversight and more community working together.
So Alan, do you want to make a motion?
Well, essentially, I don't disagree with everything that's been said. However, I think we just need you to make it easy for citizens to call the, the business owner rather than go down there. So I think, you know, and the sound carries far beyond Third Street.
Well, Alan, Alan. Hold on, Jonathan. We are, we are, we actually have a motion on the table. So it's, it really, it's, you know, this, we can't keep debating this. It's, because we're, I had said a motion, so.
Well, someone can second it, Mr. Mayor, or we can keep debating it.
I.
Well, we don't have a motion on the table yet.
I'm withdrawing my, I'm withdrawing my amendment.
Okay.
And I would ask that as a compromise, that, you know, Chris and the business make a phone number available. So if people have a problem with noise or, you know, loud music, they can just give them a call.
Alan and.
I would accept that. And Alan, I would suggest you put a, uh, 72-hour response time on that. That way we can actually require them to respond. But we put it in their, in their ball.
This is Chris. Am I, am I allowed to comment in any capacity?
It's complicated because we have an active motion on the table, so not really.
No, Alan just withdrew his motion.
Well, no, but we were, we had a motion and a, you seconded the motion to approve. So we were in the middle of a friendly amendment discussion, which has been withdrawn. So we have the motion.
We have a, we have a business number listed on, on Google and most of my neighbors do have my cell number. And they communicate with me regularly and we are open to that. Lock, stock and barrel.
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds, that sounds good.
So we do have the motion. Tanya presented the motion to approve the SRU as presented. Uh, Jonathan, you had seconded that.
Correct. As presented.
As presented, exactly.
Mayor, can we just clarify? Because there is, um, with this, there should be a resolution. So it's actually approval of a resolution. And maybe.
Is there a resolution in the packet? I have an SRU agreement in the packet.
Oh, okay.
I just realized that the, the, yeah, the resolution didn't make it into the packet.
Okay. Um, well, maybe, okay, if this is passed, then maybe we could put the resolution on consent agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, yeah, because we have the special review use agreement listed in the pack.
Okay.
Okay. Um.
So I guess just to clarify my, my position here is I would like to see the Netherlands BOT move to a point with these businesses that may from time to time exceed our noise ordinance to work with their local neighbors and not put it through the BOT. Because, you know, honestly, we're seven folks that are spread out around town. We're not necessarily the ones impacted and we can read emails and hear, hear perspective, but when it comes down to it, the folks that are really affected by these, these noise ordinances, compliance, they're the folks that are within a block or two blocks of these establishments. So when it comes down to it, I think that a better way of dealing with this as a government is to provide a forum or a process for neighbors within a two, three block residence to comment on these, these, these perspectives. And I guess just to reiterate, my point is, I, I feel like of any business, Nodder Root has done an exceptional job through all of their complications with parking, which has been beyond their control, just a result of their popularity of working closely with their neighbors as well as our local police department to accommodate these. So I, I'd like to see us approve this and kind of work with the ball as it rolls down the line. And I know that from the administrative perspective, that's, that's a loose hair, but I guess I have a lot of faith in, in this business and their relationship with the community.
Well, we have a motion to approve it as presented on the table. Miranda, would you please call the vote?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Koomz Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Apt.
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
SRU is, uh, passed unanimously. Congratulations, Chris. Look forward to, uh, seeing the patio.
Thank you so much, everybody. We'll, um, we will do it right and address anything we need to as we move. We can assure you that our neighbors will, um, they will be considered and I, I, I really do believe happy. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Bye bye.
Have a good night. Moving on to our next action item, which is, uh, return to the, uh, Solarize Grant, uh, Solarize Netherlands Program. I believe our sustainability coordinator Garrett is on to discuss the, the changes from when we were just, we had the discussion on this last week. Last week, two weeks ago.
Yeah, two weeks ago. Can you hear me okay, Chris?
We can.
Great. Um, sorry, the baby monitor is going off. Um, um, so yeah, hello, Board, Board of Trustees. My name is Garrett McDaniel, Sustainability Coordinator for the town. Uh, we spoke about this, um, in length a couple of weeks ago. Um, we've made some changes. Just to reiterate, this is a proposal, um, which allocates $10,000 to the Solarize Netherlands Program. Um, originally, a couple of weeks ago, we asked for $30,000 based on the feedback that we got from you all, we decided to reduce that to $10,000. And this would be used as a matching rebate to what Custom Solar is offering. And so you can see that in the aim, um, as far as the breakdown and the tiers and the cost per watt. Um, essentially, the, the money that the town would contribute would be a few hundred dollars to $500 per solar system for a residence or business within the, um, within town limits. We're in the third week of marketing the Solarize program. We have, uh, 14 people interested, uh, three businesses. So I think we're doing, you know, we don't have any contracts underway, but, um, I'm hopeful we can get a, a contract or two signed within the next few days. So that's really all I've got to say is that, you know, we're not asking for $30,000, we're asking for $10,000. And, um, I think just a, a few hundred dollars would, would make the difference for some of these folks, um, interested in going solar. Another thing is we did, uh, we, we talked at length about battery storage. Um, and so I think that we would not include an additional rebate for any sort of battery purchase, just because they are so expensive and, and a couple hundred dollars probably doesn't really make much difference. Um, if you can afford a battery, then you could probably just go out and buy a battery. You don't need a, any sort of town subsidy for that. So we did remove that. Um, so this really would just be a match to what Custom Solar has put out there.
Thank you, Garrett. I know I've been approached by people in town who'd heard of the program and heard that they could, uh, get more information about it and sign up at the, uh, Town Dump Day on June 5th. So I know the word's getting out there, which is awesome. So, uh, I think, yeah, this, this meets more the, meets what we were talking about the other week. So I'm gonna throw this open to any questions from the town board, beginning with Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Currently have no comment.
All right. Eric Koomz Ismail.
This looks good to me and it looks like a, a reasonable compromise from the 30,000 that was requested before. And I think this is the kind of thing that we should be doing. So I'm in favor.
Yeah. Tanya Corvallin.
Um, I'm wondering, I, if we can just give, uh, the money to anybody who's buying solar panels and it's not contingent upon buying from Custom Solar. So if somebody else was in the process of buying solar panels or wanted to do it from a different company, they could still get the same amount of rebate from the town of Netherlands that we are giving to people who use Custom Solar.
That, I, I, I don't see why that couldn't happen. Um, I don't manage the permitting process for, for solar. Um, so I'm just part of the Solarize program. You know, but there is a permit to get rooftop solar. So I, I don't see why we couldn't, you know, implement some sort of, you know, a cost decrease on, you know, that way. But, um, I don't know, Miranda or Karen might have more information on that.
Some part of this, uh, purchasing a sort of a group rate, uh, through the Solarize, and that's kind of part of this rolling together is so that if we get a, you know, 20 people to all sign up, then the price will be lower for everyone because they're group purchasing.
Uh, yeah, and that, that should be part of it. Um, but I also feel like as a town, we shouldn't be, um, I don't know what the word is, promoting a certain company over another. We should give the same amount to anybody.
Can I interject here? Cause I, I said I didn't have any comment, but listening to this, I guess, I, I have to recuse that. I, I do have a comment. And here's the fact is we're asking for $10,000 of, of Town of Netherlands funds. And essentially we're asking this so that we can back a program that allows folks that are financially well, well enough to do, that they can buy solar panels to put on their house. Now, to a certain extent, I understand that this, this falls in line with 100% renewable energy of Town of Netherlands. But the fact is, the money that Sab and you all are asking for, for this rebate program only hits about tops 100 people. So we're talking about 100 people out of a town population of 1,500 that we can rebate money to. We're talking about $10,000 of funds of a town budget. A town budget that in the last 10 years, we have had our head of public works, our head of the community center and our head of, uh, uh, the town all take $10,000 pay cuts. So you're asking for the amount that individual staff members, while maintaining their same amount of work, while maintaining their same amount of responsibilities under a agreed upon and voted upon ordinance for a living wage that we maintain their wage. They took this individually, just, just understanding the pandemic. All of these individuals took at least a $10,000 pay cut. And now we're talking about allocating $10,000 of town budget to create a rebate program for middle-class individuals who can afford a $12,000 to $14,000 solar panel setup so that they no longer have to pay electricity bill. Now, these solar panels, because of the, the cost of batteries, are not tapped into our town grid. They have no ability to back up our town businesses or other residents based upon their batteries. So you're asking me to allocate $10,000 of town funding after a year of a pandemic when we have had three of our, three of our head of our town departments take $10,000 pay cuts to maintain our budgets to give a hundred middle-class individuals who can afford to put a $12,000 solar panel setup on their roof so that those hundred individuals don't have an electricity bill. But there is no way that those hundred individuals can help their neighbors keep power when they go under power. I just don't see how this actually meets our sustainability goal whatsoever. You are helping folks that have the ability to afford not getting an electricity bill, look good on paper. And I hate to say it in that harsh a light, but that's the reality. So frankly, I'm, I'm not for this whatsoever. Because it does not actually meet Town of Netherlands 100% renewables goals because it only helps the people who can afford to help themselves.
Well, this is, this is Alan. I have an opinion. First of all, $500 per person is 20 people, not 100 people. And, um.
Alan, that, that makes it much worse, buddy. You just took 80 people out of that.
Jonathan, let him, let him talk, Jonathan.
You know, essentially, we all agreed on a, a goal of 100% renewable energy for Netherlands. We are, we, we came out of the, out of COVID in pretty good shape. And hopefully, there is actually state and federal funding for storing uh, positions and salaries to people who were cut because of COVID. So there is funding that's supposed to be coming down the pike, but it hasn't already arrived. So this is not a one-to-one comparison. And, um, it also is, is the case that when these solar panels are producing power and we reach peak load during hot summer days, they will be putting power into the grid that will be, will be preventing greenhouse gas from being burned. We do get air pollution from greenhouse, greenhouse gas in Netherlands. That's a benefit to everyone. We all have, uh, as Americans, the situation where we're putting, uh, we have a 75% higher per capita production of greenhouse gas than those people in China, just for example. So, it's a situation where we're trying to address climate change. We're trying to eliminate thousands and thousands of pounds of greenhouse gas. And we're giving some people, uh, 10 people, excuse me, 20 people at the most, uh, including potentially businesses, a very, very small rebate. Um, and I agree that they are probably middle class, they are middle class, they're not low income. We do have another program we're going to be bringing forward, which will help low-income people. And we do have a low-income, uh, solar garden. And so our next goal is to really focus on people who are, who are lower income. Unfortunately, because Excel is our only provider, uh, solar gardens are severely limited. So this is the only, uh, potential for in, you know, average middle-class individuals for getting solar panels. Uh, fortunately, the cost has come down substantially, but it's still very expensive. And this is a small rebate, although, you know, it adds up.
So, so Alan, I, I, I guess I, I fully agree with you in terms of, um, perspective, in terms of what is, what we have, what's allowable to us. Where I disagree with you is on this ideal that. Where I disagree with you is on this ideal that this meets Netherlands ideal of a hundred percent sustainability. Because what we have to really reflect on here is we're allowing tops, okay, twenty, maybe forty, if we really come up with money folks to get off, uh, Excel paying, right? That that are can you take for stiff the principle of our complete the other number, one of the four, one six. To me, providing a rebate to middle class individuals to to build solar panels on their roof to tie back into a grid that is owned by a monopoly that has shown time and time again to not give a shit about the citizens. I'm sorry, I'm a public individual. I will say that publicly. Excel is monopoly. They don't care about anything but profit. And you are putting before me a proposition to spend ten thousand dollars of town funds after I have said we have cut upwards of eighty thousand dollars of our town budget and our town staff's salary. I don't percent to renewables because it doesn't. What this provides is more leverage to a monopoly to hold leverage over you. These, this is not a smart grid. This is not batteries tapped into a smart grid being funded by the Town of Netherlands. Essentially, we're about to take Town of Netherlands funds to tap into a commercial business to give us a discount on something we all know should happen. And my 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 attitude here is, I don't care about what looks good on paper. I care about what is principle. And as the Town of Netherlands, if we have stood on anything, it's standing on principle. So if you cannot provide me with a legit sustainable energy proposition that actually ties back into this town in a way that can help this town when power goes out, that help individual citizens, frankly, I hate to say it, but this proposition helps Excel and this private business far more than it helps our citizens. And for ten thousand dollars, I would like Chris Peltier to tell me what he can do to our town public roads with ten thousand dollars. Because I remember that last year, our public roads, our our specific fund, it was about like fifteen thousand dollars. And he made magic happen. So you're asking me over a whole town. I I can't do it.
Let's hear from some of those trustees that maybe do have that, that haven't had a chance to speak. Tanya was in the middle.
I was in the middle speaking.
Yep, and we got sidetracked. So Tanya.
I mean, I'm just like flabbergasted right now, Jonathan, because first of all, you're you're saying ten thousand dollars when you all approved like twenty seven thousand dollars to give to somebody to talk about and think about making signs for our town. And you're you're freaked out about ten thousand? And when public works receive a huge private, uh, property.
Twenty seven thousand was from DDA.
Let's still tax money. It's not free money. Okay. And then we had to raise our our sales tax to give public works, they got an extra hundred thousand dollars every year from that. And and
Fifteen hundred versus twenty.
Jonathan, Jonathan, let let the others speak.
Like, we're talking about ten thousand dollars, which isn't that much money. Okay. I am more upset and I would just personally like anybody who's purchasing solar panels right now that they shouldn't have to be affiliated with custom solar. If until we run out of the ten thousand dollars, they should be able to apply for the rebate just as well.
And you're happy with that benefit going to a corporation?
Jonathan, let her speak.
Yeah, I mean, you're all upset about public works. They've already gotten a huge raise from our par our sales tax from two years ago. And I don't see any difference in the streets. So I mean, are we going to get into that? No, we're talking about this. And I just want to see the little bit of money that's being allocated to this be given to anybody who wants to buy solar panels right now. It isn't going to make a difference slightly in the carbon and and of our, uh, town are put out of carbon. And it's it's that's what I'm thinking about right now. I just don't want to particularly give all my money to custom solar. I know nothing about them. If I know somebody who works for Namaste and they want to put solar panels, they should be able to get the same rebate. We shouldn't be affiliated with the brand. That's not our business. That's all I have to say on this. That's the amendment I would add to it, but let's let everybody else talk.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya. And I apologize for having that, letting that get so sidetracked, um, away from your, the point you were trying to make. Um, we still haven't heard trustee Danforth.
Um, yeah, I I don't think my opinion has changed much since our our last meeting when we discussed all this. So I I don't really have much to add.
Trustee Kumsesmail.
Yeah, I think this is a fairly modest and small amount of money in in what is essentially kind of an experiment or a pilot program towards trying to trying trying to take, you know, uh, our residents and, you know, our sales tax money and put it back into the infrastructure of the town in some way. So what I'm seeing is that rather than, you know, uh, uh, the town kind of mandate that people do certain things for energy efficiency, we're offering incentives, very small incentives and a small rebate. And that in, uh, those solar panels will be on those homes now, right? So if if twenty people did that, then we'd have twenty more homes with solar panels in town. That to me seems like overall a good thing for a relatively small outlay. Uh, I am concerned that people won't take take this up, right? That the deadline is a little too close for in in that June thirtieth deadline. And that, uh, we won't actually see many people installing solar panels and that ten thousand dollars will be allocated, but the deadline will pass and we'll probably not end up spending all of it, or maybe even any of it. I don't know. Uh, I guess we would have to see, uh, what actually ended up happening. I would not be in favor. And I understand where trustee Corvallin is coming from completely. I would not be in favor of opening this up to to other companies, uh, simply for the reason that the entire point of this system was to try to get a certain number of kilowatt hours so that we could get the maximum rebate possible. We opened it up to other companies and we are hemorrhaging kilowatt hours to different companies and we won't get that rebate. And then the people won't benefit from it. So I think that that kind of negates the entire purpose of this program. And I do like the idea of just generally giving people money to install uh, solar panels, uh, from town if we can, if we have the money to do it, if it's affordable and if it makes sense. But, uh, in this particular circumstance, with this particular program, it doesn't really make sense to me to open it up because we would not be benefiting from this tiered system that we have here. And I would point out that we do RFPs all the time to work with specific companies for specific projects. This is not a different, this is not a new thing at all. So I don't think that we are affiliating at all with custom solar. What we, what the Sustainability Advisory Board did was they, uh, evaluated multiple companies that could do this and decided to go with this particular company. We do that all the time, almost every single day as a town. So I'm not sure that that is of particular issue. So I'd be in favor of passing this as it is. If we changed it to open it up to other companies, I I just think it negates the purpose and we don't get maximum impact for the dollar and that we shouldn't do it at all.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, before we go any further, I'd love to hear from the public on this, uh, because this is an action item. So anyone from the public who would like to weigh in on this, as you've heard the discussion at the board level, uh, we will come back and we'll have more discussion, I'm sure. Um, but anyone from the public would like to speak, now would be your chance. Usual scheme, uh, catch my attention, raise your hand, start speaking, and you can have up to three minutes to speak on the, uh, Solarize Netherlands program.
Am I, uh, am I online?
I hear. Yes, Tom, please introduce yourself and, uh, you can have three minutes.
Solar said he was here this morning. Um, I'm probably one of the few guys that's going to spend money on solar in the next sixty days. So count me in.
All right.
Hi, this is Wendy Williams again. Oops, sorry, my screen is running. Um, I think anything that we weren't allowed to, we weren't allowed to get the incentives as landlords that a regular homeowner would have. And if this would help, as Solarize is saying, it's going to, so that we as landlords who, yeah, maybe are in the 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 middle class and can do this, there are some of us like Tom Howell and myself that would spend the extra money so that we can help out the environment and pass on less costs to our tenants to make our town a more affordable place to live. We're ready to do it.
Yep. Thank you, Wendy. Kathleen, I see your hand up.
I'm trying to load my phone. That's Miranda. I'll read into the record. Kathleen Chabai. I agree with Tanya on not one business only and Jonathan on vote no.
All right. Thank you, Kathleen. Anyone else?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, please introduce yourself.
Howdy, it's Billy Giblin, one ninety-six Alf Tilden. I just want to make a comment, just general one to, um, you know, it would be, you know, monumentally expensive and probably impossible to uh, disconnect from the monopoly of Excel. Even if and when we were to get, you know, solar panels on every house, I mean, I mean, storage will ultimately be the key. So, um, I I just, I just want to kind of push back a little bit on 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 the reality that we're we're tied into Excel. For a while, um, it is a monopoly, but bridge the bridge to get to, you know, ultimately, everyone just has to go off grid to get there. And that will be huge expense. So I do feel like at least this amount of money will help some people start to make that move for the town.
Thank you, Billy. Anyone else? Not seeing or hearing anyone else. I'll bring it back to the board, uh, for any further discussion. Or if anyone would like, you know, um, so make a motion to approve table or modify.
I'm going to jump in here and it's it's just to clarify my position with the rest of the board. I I agree with the one hundred percent renewable energy goal of the Town of Netherlands. Where I don't agree is when it comes down to the specifics of reality that we're dealing with. We deal with send with Excel. They're they're a monopoly. And because they are a monopoly, we have to go with the construct, or I guess it's in the under to give. Now, as a and one plus any we at other use candidates. For instance, has received now national recognition from the National Forest Service as well as Health and Human Services. But what, how did they start? They started standing against the grain. They started by basically saying, no, you're wrong. I don't care what you have. Now, the proposition you have before me is to give ten thousand dollars of Ta- Town of Netherlands funding. I don't care if it comes from COVID, general funds, wherever staff can manage to pull it from. I look at ten thousand dollars. So I ask you, because I know our public work director is on, and I know that our our budget for streets that we just allocated last year and made a fund was only about twelve thousand five hundred. You are asking me to allocate ten thousand dollars of funding, of Town of Netherlands funding to a program that will rebate tops twenty to forty individuals, individuals that are obviously middle class or upper middle class. Now, this program does not tie back into town infrastructure, town municipality, nor anybody outside of these twenty to forty individuals who can afford to pay for these solar panels. Now, if it involved battery banks that backed up their two neighbors, I would be all for it. Because it would actually help someone beyond the folks who can afford to pay for these things. And I am one hundred percent for the folks who can afford to pay for these things, putting them on their houses and tapping back into Excel's grid. I'm all for that. I am not for spending Town of Netherlands funds to rebate specific middle class or upper middle class individuals as much as I support those folks and agree one hundred percent with them and with the goal to tie back into a grid that is fundamentally run by a monopoly. And what I'm asking the rest of this BOT to do is get past your virtue signaling. I am asking you to get past what looks good on paper. And I am asking you to fundamentally, what is reality right now? Because we all know that these twenty people are good folks and they are going to do good for the environment worldwide. But that is not your job. Your job as Netherlands BOT members is to have a thirty thousand foot view of the fifteen hundred population that we reside over and look at the allocation of those funds. And you are asking me to subsidize twenty individuals electricity bill for a monopoly that controls the electricity bill of the other fourteen hundred and eighty population because it helps on paper this goal of one hundred percent renewable energy, but it doesn't help our town. If the power goes down, those solar panels don't help us because there's no battery backup. There is no smart grid. So what I'm saying is I agree one hundred percent with our goals. I'm asking you to stop looking at what looks good on paper and start being Netherlands. Start that says this doesn't, this looks good on paper, but this doesn't actually help the other fourteen hundred members of our population. Ten thousand dollars, we had thirty thousand cut off of payroll of what we agreed on of a living payroll. I'm not going to stop, Mr. Mayor. I'm not.
No, I want to have a, I want to give the others an opportunity to speak too, because we've, I think we we understand where you're coming from. And I think we understand the points you're making about Excel and about the budget.
It's not a budget, it's principle, Mr. Mayor. It's you are asking me to approve ten thousand dollars to make a hundred percent renewable energy goal look good on paper, but that does not actually achieve the goal for the citizens.
The reality is that, um, this takes a multi-pronged effort. And I have been encouraged by the Sustainability Advisory Board's efforts to, uh, get lower income people into the solar uh, garden system and that they are continuing to work on that for for other members of the community. Uh, that every single, uh, resolution that we pass and every single strategy that we take has to serve every single person, uh, seems kind of unreasonable and impossible in what we'll end up doing.
So call the vote, Eric. You know, I stand against you. Call it. I'll stand as the one.
I mean, you know, I I really don't appreciate, uh, the, uh, the kind of assault on on our character. Uh, the idea that this is virtue signaling is nonsense. The only signaling that I'm hearing is from you, Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Seriously.
No, no, don't.
Explain to me, Eric.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, do not tell me what to do.
Okay, respectfully, I agree. I'm a little bit.
An hour this evening.
I agree. I apologize. I apologize. Can one of the other six members of the community explain to me how this benefits the entire community? Beyond our stated goals as a BOT.
This is, this is Alan. This is Alan. Jonathan, nothing we say is going to convince you. That's that's pretty obvious. But anything we can do to 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 start to build green infrastructure benefits everyone. As I explained to you, when
If you're bre- if you're building green infrastructure. No, you have to call a vote and ignore me.
Nothing I say is going to convince you.
Alan, do you want to, do you want to make a motion, Alan?
I move that we, I move that we approve this.
I second.
Miranda, please call the vote.
Um, I make an amendment and see if anybody wants, is that how it works or no? You approve it first and then make an amendment?
Uh, you can try and go for a friendly amendment.
Okay, I would, I understand the point that the more people who purchase, the cheaper the rate is. But I might have heard somebody wrong who made a comment who said that SolarCity was just at their house. And he was getting sold. He's not going to be able to get any of this rebate money from the Town of Netherland. And I just feel like it'd be fair that if anybody wants to put solar panels, regardless of who they choose, the money from the Town of Netherlands should be able to go to anybody up until the deadline, up until we run out of money unrelated to this particular custom solar. Obviously, it makes financial sense to use it through custom solar because you'll get two rebates. I just think, I, that's just my opinion. That's the friendly amendment. If nobody wants to back it, that's fine. I'm just putting it out there. To allow it open to anybody purchasing solar panels, if they can prove that they're purchasing them, we can give them the $500 or however much money it is that everybody's getting.
Alan. Alan, the, you made the amendment. She's asked, she's put the friendly amendment before you, and you've worked with SAB on this program. So what's your take? What do you think?
Well, you know, as Eric said, the disadvantage of letting anybody go any direction is that any other person won't get as much of a rebate from custom solar, and our rate, our kilowatt rate will be higher. So that was the whole idea of the group purchase with custom solar. Every, every solar installer was given the opportunity to bid. But I understand Tanya's concern, and I'm willing to accept the amendment.
Oh, thank you. I think most people would choose custom solar because they're going to get more money. It's going to be cheaper. But I like just having it open.
All right, then, before, before we call this vote, I'd like, you know, Garrett, you've been working on this with the Solarized Netherlands Program. And we have a resolution in the pack at 2021-8 to allocate 10,000 for the rebates of the participants. It says rebates for the participant in the Solarized Netherlands Program. What do we need to do to modify either the resolution or the Solarized Netherlands Program tonight to include those who use, choose to work with someone other than custom solar?
If this passes, I can update the resolution and throw it on consent agenda. I could work with Miranda on updating that language to reflect what was just talked about.
Actually, it doesn't need to, you don't need to do it that way, as long as, you know, if it passes, then there can be direction to revise the resolution so that it's clear that it meets the board's intent on the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to approve Solarized Netherlands Program to provide rebates to $500 to anyone who uses custom solar through the Solarized Netherlands Program or purchases solar through a third party during the program's duration.
I'm sorry, can I just ask? Clarifying question here, because I thought that we were matching a rebate. And so, and so we weren't going to match $500 if they weren't getting a $500 rebate. We were going to match whatever rebate they got. And right now, it doesn't make, it just doesn't make any sense in this configuration to add this friendly amendment. I'm sorry for coming up the works here, but it just, it doesn't actually make sense.
That's a good point.
Well, my idea was that if someone's getting a matching, they're going to get double the money off. And so the most logical people would choose custom solar. But either way, would custom solar given $500 off, right?
No, they're only giving $500 off if we get to that tier.
Only if we do it? They're only going to do it if we match them?
Only, only if we get to this, to the number of kilowatt hours. Right? So if we don't get to the number of kilowatt hours, we're not, they're not going to give as high of a rebate, and then we won't be able to match that amount of rebate. And so people who are not using custom solar aren't getting any rebate at all. So what are we matching?
Nothing. I guess, right?
I don't know.
We'll just give them $0. Match the rebate that they're not getting.
I just thought that custom solar was given a reduced rate, and there would be a higher reduced rate, the more people that purchased it. But either way, they're giving a reduced rate, cheaper than your average provider is what I'm.
But we're just, but we're just matching the reduction that they're giving. And if someone goes with somebody else, they're not giving any reduction. So what, what amount would we rebate them? We wouldn't have any number to rebate them. It wouldn't work.
And we can bring this back to a different meeting and offer something outside of this program to people, and we don't do it as an amendment to this. We just pass this as it is, and then talk about something separate in the future.
Sorry, disagree. Answer Eric's question is very prevalent when it comes to using taxpayers' money to rebate 20 individuals in the population of 1,500. And I'm being a dick, and I understand that.
Well, and I think the other reason we're trying to look at pushing this program now is because it is that end of June deadline with the upcoming signup events at the dump day.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I don't care about deadlines put forward by a monopoly which dictates energy prices over us. And as a party to represent 1,500 people, I do not accept this. And I understand I am one to six and pissing you all off. But you all need to take a step back from your perspective and checking boxes on.
We understand your views tonight very clearly.
Well, I appreciate it, and I'll, I'll meet myself until you call it out then, because I am frankly intense by this idea.
Question. If, if so, if, if the 25 kilowatt hours are purchased, it goes down to 219. That's a cumulative 25 kilowatt hours, and we're talking about five kilowatt hour packages. So we just need five people to sign up. That's about five kilowatt packages.
That was just an example, because that's sort of the average size for residents.
And it's not going to go any cheaper than 219, right?
That's correct. That's for a very large solar system. What we're talking about are the tiers below that. That's the aggregate program rebate. So for the first 50 kilowatts, the rebate is five cents a watt. If we go above 50 kilowatts, up to 150 kilowatts, it's seven cents a watt. Our goal is to get it to the 150 kilowatts.
I see. I see. Okay, I, I'll take back. I get what you're saying. There will be no.
So you're withdrawing your.
Yeah, so they have the cheap rate of 219. I guess I'm just a little confused because I'm not in the process of buying solar panels.
Yeah, so I think it's worth an explanation, Mayor Larson, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Go get him. Oh, careful, JoJo. Slow down. Who is that?
Someone's got a puppy.
All right, go ahead, Garrett.
Yeah, so if you're going to install a system that's in between five and 10 kilowatts, you're going to be paying $2.81 before the rebate. Now you get down to the rebate section, which is the tier bracket in kilowatts. Our goal is 150 kilowatts. So if you get that seven, that, that seven kilowatt system, it'll cost you 281. But with the tier three rebate, it's actually down to 271 per kilowatt. So what Trustee Coons is saying is correct, that, you know, if we're incentivizing folks outside the program, then it's, it's really not helping us reach that 150 kilowatt goal.
And, and that is about 10 cents a watt.
Which, yeah.
So then there's 1,000 of those. So, yeah, okay. I mean, I get it. Yeah.
So, thank you, Garrett.
I just still feel weird endorsing a company that I know nothing about, but.
We have. Sorry. I'll, I'll, we, I'll just reiterate what Trustee Coon said. We contacted over a half dozen solar installers. We received two bids. And, you know, we talked to Namaste. We talked to, you know, various local solar installers. So this was an RFP process, and this is, this is the solar installer that was.
Yeah, I guess.
Clarifying question. How many current Town of Netherlands residents do you have signed up? This has been out for two weeks.
Don't have anyone under contract, but we do have 14 parties interested.
That's good news. That, that moves my point. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second Alan's.
All right, yep. I think we, we actually have a motion and a second already on this one. So Miranda, would you please call the vote on the Solarized Netherlands Program?
Trustee Coon, Ms. Mayall?
Yes.
Trustee Apt?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhofer?
No.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Mayor Larson?
Yes. All right. Looking forward to getting this word out there and getting more people signed, you know, more interest and getting some people under contract. Thank you, Garrett. We are moving on to the next action item, which is a request, waive the restriction on the conveyance issue. This one's going to be introduced by Jennifer. I know this one's a little bit of a complicated one. So.
Yeah, this, this is Alan. I'm going to, I'm going to sign off at this point.
Okay.
I don't have paperwork in front of me on my computer, my internet connection. I'm in New Mexico, and I couldn't get an internet connection to have the documents in front of me. So but thanks for letting me chime in and have a good evening.
Let the record show that Trustee Apt left the meeting at 8:40 PM.
Thank you. Good evening. Have a good evening.
All right, Jennifer.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Jennifer Madsen, Town Attorney. And what's for, before you tonight is a request by property owner Rachel Reaver and her agent Wendy Williams. And this is related to parcel A in Netherlands Pine Grove replat. And their request is to waive a restriction on conveyance and issuance of building permits that's identified on the subdivision plat that was approved in 2006. And let me just give you a little bit of history on this. In 2006, the property owner came to the town. It was a lot line dissolution of lots six, seven, and eight on the Pine Grove addition plat. And the goal was to take these three lots and move the lot line so that then there would only be two lots, parcels A and B. On the subdivision plat is language that restricts future conveyances and restricts issuance of building permits until certain conditions have been met. And the condition on the plat is that all public improvements within lots six through seven, including but not limited to streets, gutters, curbs, sidewalks, pans, drain, drainage facilities, and water and sewer improvements were fully completed and accepted by the Town of Netherlands. Now, this language on the plat had a signature line on it, but there is no signature. The Board of Trustees meeting from this 2000 meeting do not identify any discussion of requiring this condition for approval of the replat and lot line dissolution. And there's also no discussion in the meeting minutes of any specific required improvements. There's no development improvement agreement in the town records, and also no record that this matter was discussed with the Planning Commission. So since the approval of the lot line dissolution, the parcel A, which is the parcel that's owned by Ms. Weaver, that parcel A has actually been sold three separate times, and no indication that there was a waiver obtained from the Board of Trustees, or, you know, that anybody did anything related to this restriction of conveyance. Also, we found that parcel B, which is also limited by this restriction of building permits, that a building permit was issued to parcel B to construct a single-family residence in 2019. So after we got the request to do some investigation, we spoke with the Public Works about this, and Chris Pilateer said it, it's difficult to know what, whether the improvements were installed, and unknown what improvements were required. So that's really why we're here before you tonight, is that we've got a restriction on this plat. There's a request for a waiver. It looks like since 2006, it hasn't been enforced on three separate occasions, and it's really unclear the purpose of the restriction. So I'm available for any questions.
Hey, Jennifer, this is Jonathan. 2006 BOT was the same BOT that put the non-conveyance restriction on the Peak View subdivision, correct?
Um, I'd have to go back and look, but I can look.
But by my memory, this was, and by my memory, 2006 is when this town started getting hit with $25,000 a month fines for our wastewater treatment plant being non-compliant. Therefore, the reaction of the BOT and the Planning Commission was basically to put a building moratorium without doing so, in effect. You have already stated to us once with regard to the Peak View, PUD, issue, that the restriction of non-conveyance is a abstract, very abstractly used mechanism for achieving goals. What we're looking at right now here is essentially a plot of land that the Town of Netherlands Planning Commission, then approved by the BOT, put a non-conveyance clause on dictating that nobody could sell this land until the Town of Netherlands finished their infrastructure improvement. Now, in the last three months, as a BOT member, I have witnessed this BOT defer that infrastructure improvements that are being actually placed upon this property owner, that Town of Netherlands must achieve these property improvements before you can sell. Now, we have deferred that for, well, before I was a BOT member, at least six years. Now, we just officially deferred that again about a month and a half ago. And we just allocated $10,000 of our funds that could be allocated to improving this infrastructure to rebate 20 individuals of a population of 1,500 to put solar panels on the roof. Now, we're trying to tell this individual, they can't sell their property until we bury their power lines and upgrade their sewer and their other infrastructures to the quality we live in. Mayor, please agree with, please debate with me, because I'm frankly.
Because we are not saying that about this individual. The thing before us tonight is actually to remove those.
Correct. And the only reason that we even have to vote on this is because the 2006 BOT and Planning Commission put it on this individual that they couldn't sell their property till the Town of Netherlands fulfilled their agreements. And this is the third time in the three years of being a BOT member, I have been faced with an issue where I have to give back rights to a property owner, because the Town of Netherlands took them under the pretense that they would fulfill obligations, which now, what, this is seven years later, we have failed to actually achieve. No, Mayor, I'm serious with you. I love Ned. I love the Town of Netherlands.
I think that we all do. Every single person on this board. That's one thing.
Why is this even before us?
Well, so that we can fix it.
I mean, ask for clarification from the Town Attorney. When this language on this plat says that the conveyance is issued until all town facilities, that is a duty that the Town Board in 2006 put on the owner. This is the owner was required to do certain things.
Correct. When the Town of Netherlands.
Jonathan, Jonathan, let me finish speaking. The Town Board and Planning Commission at the time said that the owner had to do certain things, but did not say what those even were in the notes and in the minutes of those meetings.
I disagree. I disagree. I, I, I think what the owner was required of was specifically outlined, and what the town was required of was specifically outlined. The unfortunate part about this is the owner fulfilled their requirements. But because our comprehensive plan and because our 2020 plan required, let's see. required, let's see, the power lines to be buried and other infrastructure to be addressed, that was unfortunately beyond our scope realistically. That hasn't happened. So now what we are dealing with is that a public owner has fulfilled their requirements, and we have not. And I am getting tired of this, Mr. Mayor. I am getting tired of trying to look good to the Town of Netherlands citizens because they all know better and because I grew up here. The time has come for the Town of Netherlands to say there are so many things that we have tried to hold you accountable to that we have not been able to. And Eric and Mr. Mayor, I see you putting your hands in your face because it doesn't look good as a government to come out and say, yeah, we haven't been on top of it. But you know what looks worse? Trying to hold your ass against a citizen.
Jonathan, Jonathan, I need to remind, Jonathan, do we need to remind about, you know, the way we all agreed we'd hold these meetings and we speak.
With all due respect, Mr. Mayor, you just spent the last four years under President Trump. So you can remind me all you want, but respect reality.
Well, does anyone, trustees, trustee, Tanya, do you have any questions about this for the town attorney?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, trustee Danforth, do you have any questions about this for the town attorney?
No.
Eric, trustee Kums Ismail.
Looks cut and dried to me.
Thought so too. Jonathan, do you have any actual, do you have questions about this for the town attorney?
Why did this come up now?
The, I understand that the property owner wants to sell the property. That's why it's come up now. And in the title work, the title company brought this to the property owner as an issue. That's my understanding.
So, yeah, to the rest of the BOT who is functionally elected by the 1,500 members of this population of community, I respectfully request you to consider the fact that you not only have to deal with this now because it was brought to you, because the owner wants to sell a property and our ordinances now actually are so messed up that they have to come before us. I am respectfully requesting of you, the other six members of this BOT, to take a step back and recognize that this is one property out of all of our properties. And because we fundamentally have an ordinance and a town code that is so messed up that if this individual wants to sell their property, they have to come before us for approval, that we should stop dealing with this on an individual basis? And we should try to actually fix our code so that we don't have to deal with this? And I'm sorry if I am so incensed, but I am sensed because I am in the building industry because I deal with landowners, general contractors, and other folks that are held to our ordinances, our code. This individual is having to come before us to fix something we all agree with. We all understand. But we have to go through this discussion.
And we would have passed it by.
You want to approve this tonight and not deal with the problem.
Jonathan, write up a proposal for a discussion on an ordinance that somehow fixes all of these things from the last 30 years. I'd be happy to pass it. But maybe you should maybe look at yourself to do the work that you think that we all should be doing for whatever reason.
So, so here's the deal, Eric. There's work that has to be done, Eric. There, there is simply following town codes, which we don't do.
This is not town code. This is not town ordinance.
Yes, Mayor Larson, this is. This is 2006 town ordinance that now, as of 2021, we are overriding.
I don't believe it was an ordinance.
But, but Mayor, we overrode this code on the Peakview subdivision to a huge downfall. Now, the fundamental principle issues that were in argument during that issue are still in play with this. Different owners, different subdivision, to us as a BOT seems less fundamental. Why? Well, let's see. We're not dealing with elk herd migration. We're not dealing with open space. We're not dealing with all that. We're dealing with something that is in town, that us as the BOT sees as fundamentally locked in with infrastructure. But we're dealing with the same issues, and we're dealing with the same code that we dealt with with the Peakview subdivision. So I have a hard time with this BOT not taking things on.
You know, Jonathan, it's totally different than Peakview.
Oh, motion.
And why don't we just vote on this so we can move on to the agenda?
Hold on. Jonathan. Jennifer?
Well, it's actually an action item, so you need public comment.
I know. Yep, that's what I was trying to break in and say.
Great.
We will take public comment on this. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this issue, now would be your chance. Because I know we have both Wendy Williams and Rachel Weaver online bearing witness to this fine night in Netherlands history.
Hey, guys. Thanks for talking about this. We really appreciate it. It happened to be that the buyer had a attorney look at title work, which was different than the last three times it was sold because it was the title company. And it is just some really bad language on an old replat. It's just bad language saying that there should be gutters and curbs and this and that and all these other things that have never been seen in Old Town. And it did put the responsibility on the town. And it has nothing to do with the property owner's responsibility. And we'd really love if you just look at it that way and move on with this because it's one replat. It's one little bit of language. It's not ordinance. It's not code. We're not changing anything big. Just this one tiny waiver of this super bad language that was never even signed on this replat back in the day. We'd love if you would just look at this for what it is, understand that, you know, it was never really meant to be, and we just need to fix some bad language. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you, Wendy. Would anyone else like to speak on this? Not hearing or seeing anything, I will bring it back to the board and look to see if anyone has a motion regarding Resolution 2021-10.
I move to approve Resolution 2021-10.
Do we have a second? Oh, I heard a second. From trustee Danforth, I heard the second first. Miranda?
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhoffer.
Kitchen.
No.
Resolution 2021-10 passes. All right. I'd like to propose, uh, let's make it an eight-minute break. We've been at this for a couple hours, and we have the executive session first. So let's, uh, let's turn off our cameras, step away, get some water, and come back at 9:05 PM. Stupid. Johnny, I bought you that. Hope everyone has come back from refilling their water bottles. Uh, we've actually got two more action items on the agenda this evening, and they are both culmination of conversations, discussions we've had over the past couple of months now regarding the adoption of the electrical code and the wooi code. So Miranda, you want to introduce the electrical code?
Yes. And so as Mayor Larson had indicated, this is the second reading. This has actually come before you two different times. But tonight, we're looking for adoption of the code, or excuse me, of the ordinance. And so what this is, is when the State Electrical Board adopts the most current addition of the National Electrical Code, local governments are required to adopt the same version. So this is required, kind of legislatively speaking. And so we would need to make sure that town code aligns with the 2020 National Electrical Code. So what is before you is that ordinance 817 adopting the 2020 edition. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this so it can be incorporated into our municipal code.
All right. Board questions regarding this? I know we've heard this several times, so I don't imagine there's going to be a huge number of questions, but trustee Kums Ismail?
No questions from me.
Okay. Mayor Proton Baumhoffer?
No comment.
Trustee Danforth?
No questions.
Trustee Corvallin?
Uh, no.
Okay. This is an action item, so I will also open up the floor to any public comment on the adoption of the National Electric, the 2020 Electrical Code. Anyone would like to speak on that? Now is your chance. Not hearing or seeing anyone, any, I will bring it back to the board for any further comments, questions, thoughts, or a motion regarding adoption of ordinance number 817.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Miranda?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhoffer.
No.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. Moving forward, final is a very similar second reading. Jennifer?
It's actually going to be Miranda.
Read the wrong line on my notes.
No, yes. So again, second reading, third time this has come before you. As we originally had stated, we have the Wildland Urban Interface Code, which is designed to mitigate the risk of wild.
As we originally had stated, we have the wildland urban interface code, which is designed to mitigate the risk of wildfire to life and property. So back when the 2000 codes were adopted, the wooi code was added into the international building code for commercial structures. But it appears that there was an oversight with adding it into the international residential code. So we brought this before the board to look to make an amendment to the international residential code in order to ensure that wooi is then applicable to residential structures. But there are, I know there was a discussion at the last meeting about additional kind of fire code, and that will come with the updated building code. This is just specific to correcting that oversight. And then as Rick Hendrickson and I have both explained, we already have builders who are adhering to this. They felt was requiring that people adhere to residential wooi code. It's just kind of the formality of making sure it gets into the code correctly. So we're looking for the board to approve ordinance 818. I don't know, we have Rick here, so I don't know if Rick, you have anything else you want to add? He's also here to answer questions since I know there was a lively discussion last.
I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay. Yeah, any questions for the board or thoughts on this? Tanya?
No, I'm off board.
Okay, Lindsay?
No questions.
Jonathan?
No comment, Yova.
Eric?
Nothing from me.
All right, nothing from me as well. Again, action item, anyone from the public would like to speak on the adoption of the wooi, wooi wildlife zones, wildfire zones, wow. Wildfire, not wildlife zones. Now will be your chance. Catch our attention, speak up. Not seeing or hearing, I'll bring this back to the board and see if we have a motion regarding ordinance number 818.
I move to approve ordinance 818 to amend the IRC requirements based on location wildfire zone.
I'll second that.
Motion from trustee Danforth, second from trustee Kums Ismail, Miranda?
Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baumhoffer?
No.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismail?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one and is adopted. That concludes action items for this evening, but we have one discussion item that is going to be introduced by our public works manager, Chris, that we've been talking about is a changes to code, possible changes to code to allow for payment plans for delinquent utility accounts.
Yeah, thanks. Good evening, board. Thanks for hearing me tonight. So staff is asking the BOT tonight to consider a change to code and a policy on providing utility payment plans to customers and residents. Staff believes the timing is appropriate. Currently, there's an emergency declaration in place suspending late payments and shut offs, which will likely end sometime in the near future. Currently, town code states section 1328 and 1358 of the town utility sewer and water code. Payment plan, no payment plans for payment of delinquencies over time to delay enforcement. That'll be authorized. That's town's current code. However, staff does on occasion still allow customers an opportunity to avoid late fees and make payments, also able to meet their future obligations. And even though that is outside of code, we still feel like it's a good idea to work with our customers when we can. And so this is something we'd like the board to consider correcting so that staff has that opportunity. Staff is proposing a change to code that makes some minor changes, essentially removes two words and adds another. So what we're asking for you to consider it to read as follows. Payment plans for payment of delinquencies over time to delay enforcement may be authorized. So essentially removing the word no and the word shall and replacing it with may. A very simple change to code. Additionally, a draft of a payment plan is in your packet and payment plan provides uniformity and ensures, you know, all customers have the same consistent opportunity enter into a plan with town staff to pay their, their, their utility bills that may be in arrears. So that's what you have before you tonight, so I'll take any questions now that you may have on that and and that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Danforth, any questions regarding this change?
I think my only question is, when does our emergency ordinance, suspending the late fees and everything, when does that expire?
I don't know. I think that's a declaration the mayor made, and I think it's tied with the governor's declaration. Is that accurate, Mayor?
I believe we, it expires when we say it will, and I think with the changing state and county stance on that, it's almost start, it's, it's coming time for us to look at what, when we do our, or when we revoke our emergency, and it'll probably be within the next two months.
Okay, and I assume that we have some people that are currently behind in payments or in arrears?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm all for working with residents, I think, in finding a way to have a payment plan that works for them. This is very common practice, and I think it would be good for our constituents. So thanks for bringing this before us.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yeah, I'm totally for a payment plan. I'm curious about the no late fees because I'm looking at my water bill here and it's like, says, do now 105, pay after a certain date, 110, so it's like a 5% late fee has been added to, and I just sent it into my check because I forgot to pay it, so I added the, I added the $5. So I'm just, I don't care, I'm just, but this is my fault for sending it in late, but why do you guys say you're not having late fees when you do have late fees?
I'll look into that. I don't know.
I mean, it's on my bill. I never thought about it. I always forget to pay bills, and so I'm always paying late fees. That's my fault, but I understand we need to have a payment plan for when it's not just, I forgot. I'm all for this, so go for it, and please look into that because it is on the water bills, and I always end up paying the late fee because I'm late.
I think that's like a discount versus a full price, right? Is that, I think that's how I remember seeing it, not necessarily late fee.
Well, no, I don't know, because it says, actual, it says current amount, do X, current about, do now X, pay after a certain date, it's X, and then a 5% looks like added on. Just, and it's not clear because the bills, you know, as we've talked about in the past, our bills aren't super clear for the water. Not clear that you're getting a discount for paying on time, but if that's the way it's done, that's fine too. So
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'd like to know, are we charging people late fees or are we just giving people discounts for paying on time?
I believe we have a codified flat fee or late fee. And I don't think we're charging that, but I'll get more clarity on that.
Well, there is a different amount that's higher if I pay after a certain date. But I stay on topic, stay on topic. I like what you're, we're exploring with this.
All right, trustee Kums Ismail, staying on topic.
Yeah, I just wondered if we have a number on how much money is actually owed to the water utility?
I have an idea of a typical amount of people that are late, pre-pandemic. So normally at the 30 day mark, there's around 100 customers, 100 to 125 customers are late. Then at around the 50 day to 60 day mark, it gets reduced to around 60 normally. And then at the the 70 to 90 day mark, it's usually around 35-ish customers. And right now during pandemic, it's not crazy, it's around 50 by the time you get to the 70, 90 day mark. So it's not, you know, an unreasonable number of people. I don't know what the number is exactly.
But so maybe we could very roughly pencil in a sort of between 10 and $15,000 being owed to the water utility?
Possibly. I don't think it's that much.
Okay, I just, I'm only asking because I feel like this might be kind of a useful place to use pandemic relief funds if the number makes sense in the future, just because this is a discussion item I'm thinking of. You know, we could relieve people of this burden by simply covering their costs and putting some of that COVID relief money into, into the water fund in order to offset that. So just an idea, I like, I like the idea of more permanently changing the code so that we can have this repayment plan. The other question I had was, is there a kind of a, is there a logistical reason why this can only be made available to the homeowner or the property owner?
It just sort of cuts out the middleman. Sometimes what happens is the, the homeowner is kind of left in the dark. And since code really requires, there's the burden on the homeowner or the property owner anyway to make the payment, that it's just best to make this plan with the homeowner, and they can work it up with their renters if that's what they need to do. We have had instances in the past where the renters aren't communicating with their, their property owners. They may actually even leave town, and then the property owners are left with late fees and, and so forth. So it's really just in the best interest of the property owner to kind of keep track of what's going on and work with their tenants.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that that brings up to me is that it's, not that this is necessarily the case, but it does feel likely that properties that are in arrears on their payments are likely to be rental properties, and if you're, if you're a renter, you're more likely to not be able to pay the water bill, which would then maybe translate to the water bill not being paid at the town side. So it would be, it would be interesting if there was a way that we could go more directly to tenants, but if, if that's not really feasible, then, then I suppose this, this will do. But the code change doesn't preclude us from going directly to tenants in the future, especially if we change systems. We find that it's easier to do it, so the code change fundamentally makes sense to me. It was just a question about that example that you provided.
And I will add that there are programs out there that we share with customers where there is funding available to help people with their utility bills. Can't think of them off the top of my head, Canyon Cares, I think is one, and there's, there's quite a bit of money out there, and some of our customers have taken advantage of it.
Great, okay, thank you. That's really all the questions I have.
Yep. Mayor Protem Baumhoffer?
No comment.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're all clearly in favor of this, so we should bring this back as a, you know, a code change as soon as we can, and then do what we can to implement the policy or the procedure.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
Next meeting, is that okay, or?
I think so. I think this is very clear. I mean, this is something, certainly this code change is something that probably could just be done in consent agenda. Yeah, I think let's get this implemented as quickly as possible.
Yeah, we could bring it back in consent agenda. The only other question we had is, as far as the policy goes, is that something that we should just include annually with the fee schedule? Or, Chris, did you want to ask that question more specifically? Chris Publoteer, about whether or not we want it codified or not?
Well, you know, as I mentioned, your aim, I just think it's better to keep it as policy and
And, and just, yeah.
Can be changed.
So if, if the board's okay with us doing that, we'll bring it back as a consent agenda item and have the policy as one item that would get approved and actually should have a resolution tied to it because we would update the fee schedule to allow for the payment plan, and then we would bring the, the changed language for code as well. That sound good?
That sounds good, and I do think that's something we want to move fairly quickly on since we are looking at the potential end of the emergency.
Okay, we'll bring, we'll bring it to consent at next meeting.
Great. All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
And that, I think, was our only information item for this evening, so we are moving into our staff and board reports. So town administrator, Karen Garrity.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor Larson. I'll just go quickly because we do have several items that some of our different department heads would like to bring to you tonight to your attention. The ones that I want to make sure you're aware of is, first of all, I wanted to recognize our fire protection chief, Richter. And mainly I'm calling him out because he has steadfastly been the biggest advocate for doing, you know, creating an emergency egress in Big Springs. And this has been, I think, over 20 years that he's been involved in trying to advance that initiative. And I know he's working with the committee right now on trying to identify the best way to move forward with that. And of course, we all have shared the great news that Congressman Nagus has also picked this up as worthy of potentially federal funding. So I just wanted to recognize him because it is something that he has just worked on tirelessly for a couple of decades. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we've talked about this a little before, but the town, because we're positioned so well now, we are in a good position where we could start looking at how we could invest some of our reserve funds. So those would be the funds that we're not going to be tapping into anytime soon. It's, for instance, the money that we collect that's put into reserves for improvements to our utilities, you know, our PIF fees and things like that that go above our budget, but then get set aside. And staff would like to bring to you, we're hoping next month, a presentation about Calo Trust. We've done some research. I actually worked with them for many years as part of the Scientific Cultural Facilities District, and we invested, you know, tens of millions of dollars a year there. Very highly regarded. I put a link in the report so you all can go and look at it and check out their services and their products. And of course, if you have any questions, you're welcome to email Rita and me, and then we will bring you more information at a future meeting. As far as the COVID update goes, things are just a little bit up in the air. I mean, we're in the all-clear level right now, but the mask order is a little bit in limbo. The state, you know, has come out basically saying that masks are no longer required, although they're still very highly recommended. And then they're leaving it to the local jurisdictions and the local public health teams to determine how the mask orders will play out in, for instance, Boulder County. Boulder County is working on that right now. It looks like I might have just gotten an email from the interim director about that. They were hoping to get some guidance to all of us municipalities in the county regarding that. Long story short, I think everybody's following this as well. If you're outside and you've been vaccinated and you can, you know, maintain those six feet distance, you don't have to wear a mask. If you haven't been vaccinated or you have, you know, immune issues, or if you are in a large crowd, you know, they're saying you should still continue to wear a mask. It's a little bit, though, like we're getting some double messaging going on, so I'm hoping to get some more clarity from Boulder County. And of course, I will follow up with you guys on that. Also wanted to just give you the information about the TESI shuttle update, which will be going on again soon. And again, operating out of the high school and not out of RTD. So there's a whole bunch of information on that and a link to that website. And then planning and building, we're, we're staying super busy, issuing permits and reviewing plans and whatnot. So still making it work, even though everything we're doing pretty much is virtual, we're being able to handle a lot of activity. So that's all I'll share. The rest is in the packet. Thank you. Um, we're being able to handle a lot of activity. So that's all I'll share. The rest is in the packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Uh, Town Treasurer Rita Rita Six, I see you on here. Oh, Rita? You're on mute.
Rita, if yours, yeah. What happened?
There we go off a
Okay, I'll start over. The twenty the twenty the twenty twenty April financials continued to trend with an increase in tax revenue and a decrease in expenses when compared to the projections. I will not go into each one of the funds, but wanted to just talk about the two funds that are added this month. So in the Health and Human Services Fund, the year-to-date revenue um, equals forty-six hundred dollars. We have budgeted for the whole year, six thousand dollars. So that is really wonderful that we've received forty-six hundred dollars so far. And then in the Conservation Trust Fund, the only thing I do want to point out is that um, we have spent forty-two hundred dollars in April um, for the first time that has been um, and towards parks and trails improvements. And really, that's it. The rest is in your packet. Um, if you have any questions on this, let me know. Otherwise, I would like to continue and talk about the twenty twenty-one supplemental budget.
Please do.
Okay. So I've been working with the auditor, obviously, on our twenty twenty budget. And she has brought to our attention that we should consider issuing a twenty twenty-one supplemental budget uh, for the following reasons, that the capital contract and debt contra um, including depreciation, amortization should be removed. Because really, as far as budgeting goes, you should always only put cash that comes in and out for budgeting purposes. In other words, that that contra, the depreciation and all those um, items should truly their year-end adjustments that we do and therefore financial statement reporting only. She also um, said that we need to add the twenty twenty Tahoe uh, for the full amount of the lease um, into our twenty twenty-one budget, not just that lease payment like we have done. So um, since I've actually written this report, um, an additional item has come up that we would like to include in the twenty twenty-one supplemental budget, and that is also for the PD. And the plan would be we would want to move funds from the wages to the training. And the marshal will provide more information to you during his report tonight. So what I would like to do, I I'd come back in June. Um, potentially with the numbers for supplemental budget. Any questions?
Any questions for the treasurer regarding those items? All right, well, look forward to seeing the supplemental budget next month. Thank you, Rita. Uh, next up, I believe, is our deputy town administrator, Town Clerk Miranda Fisher.
All right. So over the last thirty days, we've issued nineteen new and renewed business licenses. Year-to-date is forty-eight. Currently working on the license renewal for liquor for covered wagon and damn liquor store. Marijuana, I don't have any updates at this time. Um, over the past thirty days, we've issued nine building permits for a year-to-date of thirty-seven. Peter Kistick, who is our administrative assistant, he has now been trained on how to enter one-stop permits, which is great because that allows three people to now do it, where historically it was just Cynthia. Um, so we're able to provide a lot more support to the community who pulls permits. Four core requests were completed this month, which I've outlined in the report. I'm also starting to include some of the special events. It's that time of year, people are pulling applications. And so I am including that information. So you can see kind of the rentals that are occurring in town, primarily on town property. And then um, I did do just a quick envision. We're actually bringing this to you on June first, so I won't go too far, but April, we focused heavily on community feedback on the vision statement goals and objectives. And ninety-two people participated. And so that in combination with the number of people who did the SWOT analysis, we're looking at just shy of two hundred people who have participated in the process so far. So that's been great. I mean, still more to come at your June meeting. And one thing I realized I did not put into this report, although there's two pieces, is we started mitigation Monday, which is a hashtag social media campaign. So you should see that throughout the different Facebook pages. And the focus of that is just to make sure that mitigation is on people's minds. So I'm teaming up with the fire department to come up with different ways to encourage people to mitigate properties, to understand their zonings, and then also what resources are there. And then another thing, not in the report, but we will continue to push out that the town cleanup, Mayor Larson mentioned it earlier, is Saturday, June fifth, starting at eight AM. And that will go until noon or when the dumpsters are full. And we encourage you to check out our website. We released the site map for it yesterday. We encourage you to check out our website for more information. And actually, if you scan this QR code here, it'll take you to the Envision site, but then one of the boxes right below Envision is the town cleanup. So you can easily access it. And that's my report.
Are you still looking for volunteers for that?
Yes, we are looking for volunteers. Thanks, Mayor Larson. If you're interested in volunteering, please email me. Did have quite a few from last year reach back out, but we always could use the help. And volunteers are able to dispose of their items for free. Otherwise, the dumpster, it does cost twenty dollars per load for the dumpsters. So if you volunteer, that's kind of a perk of doing that.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. Any questions for Miranda? All right. Next up, uh, Marshal Larry Johns.
Uh, good evening, board. I'll just try to get to the meat of this um, reference what Rita had spoke about. Um, but before I do get to that, I just want to uh, ask you the board members if there's anything that's in my packet here that uh, you have questions on, would like to answer that first and then move forward with uh, what I didn't get in the packet.
My only question would be, my only question would be, you know, I've I've noticed a significant uptick in the moose situation that you called out.
Uh, yes, we have had a quite a significant amount of moose activity. We believe there's probably just one, and actually Division of Wildlife was here on Monday. And we had tried to tried to locate her and we're we're gonna try to push her out of town. Uh, before we have a conflict with somebody and somebody's injured, uh, we've already had two dog conflicts so far. And um, fortunately, nobody was injured. Last year, we had a similar incident with the moose that hung around spring and then fall. And we did have somebody that was knocked down by her and a little bit trampled, but uninjured. So before something gets out of hand, um, they thought it was best that we address the problem and try to deal with it. Um, but it appears that nobody's seen her in about the last four or five days. So maybe that's a good thing, but I'm sure she'll be in and out of town. Just ask people to give her a distance and keep your dogs leashed.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, so reference what uh, Rita was
I did have a quick, sorry, I did have a quick question, Marshal. I was just wondering about those uh, that defensive tactics training uh, where it mentions how an incident can change from a resisting person to a medical event. And I was just wondering if that is uh, if if that is referring to a medical event for the person who might have been resisting. Is that uh, kind of in response to restraining holds that have, you know, been on the news recently?
Uh, absolutely. That's it's exactly what that's what that's about. And um, so we were training with Boulder Sheriff and um, you know, they try to really make it clear that um, you know, things can change. You know, you may be dealing with somebody that um, is obviously amped up. Maybe maybe they're, maybe they're not, maybe they're on drugs, maybe they're not. Um, who knows? But basically, the incident can change, you know, rapidly and uh, we need to be paying attention to make sure that it's not just a resistant person that, you know, you're fighting with, that all of a sudden may need medical attention. So it's just really, you know, trying to bring that back to the forefront that um, you can get somebody restrained or whatever, but then after that, um, you need to start checking and seeing what their medical issues are, if if they have any, and and take the appropriate steps. So.
And could I could I just, uh, just for just to satisfy my curiosity, um, could I ask, do you have an example of like how you can tell when it's when it has transitioned to a medical event? Do they give tips on how to do that?
I think you could, I mean, to be honest with you, I think you can just tell. I mean, you you generally know when somebody's in distress. I think all of us have seen people in distress. Generally, that's going to be breathing issues or lack of movement. And, you know, just lack of what you would expect a normal person's behavior to be. Uh, so, you know, at that point in time, if if they were okay a little bit ago, and all of a sudden now they're struggling to breathe, or they're passed out, or, you know, they're not as awake as you feel they should be, then hey, it's time to, uh, you know, get medical rolling for them.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering what that actually entailed. Thank you.
Yeah, I I mean, it's, you know, it could be such just a wide gamut of what that looks like. But I, again, I I think the common person can tell when somebody else is in distress. I hope.
Yes, one would hope that that is the case, but sometimes it seems like it might not be.
Right. Well, you get, you know, you have a group of people and everybody's amped up and um, tempers are running high and uh, you know, you're trying to give directions and you know, you get that auditory exclusion. And I I think that uh, sometimes that's not recognized. We're taught about it and we're taught that we we're supposed to understand that there's auditory exclusion on our part, but, you know, I think on the suspect's part, they can have it too. And maybe we're not recognizing that that's going on as well.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thanks. So um, this this comes into the staffing portion. We had a interview to couple of candidates a few weeks back. Uh, one of them is in academy and finishing up here in a little while. And the other one is interested in going to academy. Um, this was just kind of brought brought up to us unknowingly. So we went ahead and brought this person in for an interview. And I don't know what I was expecting, but they like totally knocked it out of the park. Um, so we had some discussion amongst ourselves and with Karen and Rita. And um, basically, we would like to offer this person a position, but send them to academy. Uh, they're not, they're not post-certified now, but I feel that this investment will be an investment in the town for the next several years. And I think it's worth the risk, financial risk to uh, put this person through academy. So let me just provide a little bit of information what that looks like. Uh, so NPD is close to making a job offer to a highly highly qualified local first responder. Providing tuition assistance for post-training would align with the town and with other municipalities who include this benefit for some of the new officer candidates based on their qualifications. The officer candidate agrees to a minimum of a two-year service period with the town. And if that employment is terminated prior to two years, all or part of the tuition would be reimbursed would be reimbursed to the town. Savings in the twenty-one twenty twenty-one NPD budget under the wages area are making it possible for the town to cover the tuition fees. And this change to the budget will be presented by Rita next month, as she had explained. Um, any questions? That's that's what we're looking to do. Um, academy would not start until August and then would finish up in December. So we're kind of getting close to our crunch timeframe as far as getting the application in, getting approval, uh, things like that. There are a few a few steps that we need to complete before we, you know, do that stuff. And that would be uh, background check, um, psych and polytest, the regular stuff that any other officer would do. So we would do that ahead of um, sending them to an academy.
And that two-year period is that post-academy? So it's like the two-year would start in January of twenty twenty-two? Or does it start in August when they?
No, we kicked around some things, but I believe that we had agreed upon two years after graduation. So two years of of servants on the street.
Of sort of full service. I I think it seems like a great way to potentially deal with some of our staffing issues. If we can bring some new people into the force and
I I think it is as well. Um, uh, and, you know, like I said, other agencies do do this and um, we've always kind of wondered if we could pull it off financially. But the other flip side of it is too, we've I've never had somebody that would say, I think this person is worth putting the money into. And and that's how I feel um, about this applicant.
And that's something that will come to us with that part of that supplemental budget that Rita was discussing. Right?
Yes, yes. So we do have, we do have the money, you know, saved in wages right now. So it's not uh, not costing the town anything else. It's it's already budgeted for, it just needs to get moved around apparently.
Any other questions for the marshal? Or do you have more to talk about? Oops. Go ahead, Eric.
Could I ask what the tuition cost is?
Tuition cost is close to ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was going to be between nine and ten thousand.
That's pretty close. Um, we had also drafted um, for the applicant to pick up some of the cost on their own. And um, I just chose to do that a little bit. So it's there's they kind of broke it up into two areas. It's like, here's your tuition. It covers X, Y, Z. And then here's four or five things that you also have to cover on your own, like uh, books, uniform, uh, testing, um, other just general materials and stuff. Uh, so that is in addition to, and I just felt uh, if this person was interested enough that we could come to some type of an agreement and um, you know, they pay a little bit, we pay more, but they also are, you know, getting, we're getting this buy-in from them as well.
And um, would the applicant be able to choose what academy they attended or would that be specified?
Um, so the academy that we're looking at is Red Rocks Police Academy. Red Rocks Community College. Um, like I said, because their start time is appropriate and it's relatively, it's as close as any of them. So it makes the most sense.
And I do think that because retention is such an issue uh, in staffing in staffing our our PD, and because I do want to retain our own PD that we control as a town rather than passing that off to the county, that uh, we do need to retain people. And so I think the two-year requirement is good. I think that I would love it to be a three-year requirement. And I would also really like it if it wasn't prorated in that. If they did terminate uh, within that two-year period or whatever the period ended up being, that the entire amount of the tuition would have to be repaid to the town of Ned because let's face it, we're doing this because retention is such an issue.
Yeah, and and I understand exactly where you're coming from and um.
And trustee Kumsizmail, we did run the um, agreement by Employers Council. And they let us know, because we actually had written it to be a three-year commitment. And they let us know that statutorily um, for what we were doing, we couldn't ask for more than two years commitment. So we had the same thought. And I will say that both Sergeant Fine Levin and Marshal Johns have been really working me very hard with this. And and I was very resistant um, probably six months ago when they first bought this idea to me. But I have really come over to the other side and especially seen that other municipalities are doing it and even small communities like ours. Because it is a way to get that commitment. Um, you know, like you're talking about, to get some stability in your staff and to already build that trust. And 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 like uh, Sergeant Marshall John said, this was an outstanding, outstanding applicant. So, you know, it's not something we would do lightly. Um, the qualifications have to meet a certain bar. And then funding would have to be available. So.
And then
It's a nice, it's a nice option for now.
My last question regarding that was, is this My last question regarding that was, is this tied in any way to their performance in the Academy?
So in the, in our contract, that was a kind of a contentious word thrown in there as far as, you know, what their performance goals were in Academy. And I don't remember the exact word we came up with, but that was obviously of concern. But they, they do have to, you know, have good academic standing, I believe, is, is how it ended up getting written. But there you go, good. I, I don't, what does good really mean? But that's, that's the way it came out to be. And based upon other education that this individual has, I just don't see that that's going to be a problem, to be honest with you guys. And, you know, if we even went to a three-year commitment, if we, if we could, again, I don't think it matters because if it's not gonna work out, it's just not gonna work out. And there's, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do to make that better. The piece of paper isn't gonna change that outcome.
Understood, yeah. The only, the obvious concern there being that when, when it's not your own money at stake and when it feels like you've got a guaranteed job, that you can sort of just slide in under the bar there at the minimum level of, of acceptable performance standards. And you can get it, and you can get a gig. And I just hope that we're not incentivizing that kind of behavior in anyone.
I agree 100% with you.
Well, you have no, and that, you should never have no, and that.
Any other questions for the Marshall? Not. Thank you, Marshall. Move on to Public Works is next, Chris.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that actually I've seen several moose up here at the shop. Not this week, Larry, but they travel in threes. And, you know, a lot of wildlife comes up through here. They seem to go down Stinky Gulch and, and head into town that way. And then head across the street and head towards Caribou if they're going north. So I see a lot of action up here. I just want to put that out there, but not in the past.
Yeah, thanks for the heads up. I did check Stinky Gulch the other day while we were doing our moose search, so to speak. You know, I mean, they could be laid down anywhere and you wouldn't see them very easily. So it's hard to say, they'll be back.
Yeah, they, you know, the salt and stuff around here, it's pretty quiet, so they kind of travel through. Okay, so I met with Jill Reeves, who had reached out to Park, Boulder County Park and, and open space forestry specialist Scott Golden, who has done quite a bit of work in the area around Netherlands for many years. And, in particular, and it's about the little piece of property adjacent to Wild Bear's property there on, on Indian Peaks Road that borders the highway. And they had some availability and offered to come and mitigate that spot. For those of you that drive by frequently, you see a lot of dead trees laying there. And so they're eager to get on it and, and mitigate it and clean it up a little bit. So if you see activity, you know, I told Scott that I'd let you guys know that that's what's going on. There'll be some youth groups there. It's about a three-acre piece of property that they're gonna be working on. So, and that'll be happening in the next, probably start next week and be ongoing for next month or so. So, so nothing, it's not Wild Bear doing any construction or anything. It's just a little bit of mitigation attempt. Also, I've been going to meetings for the SMS. So tonight, you guys had approved the contract with JBA. And, and we just finished the IGA with CDOT. So we're into the, the design phase or almost into the design phase. And so I've met with the DDA last week and I'm meeting with ProSAP this week. Then SAB next week as part of Netherlands planning process. And to get input from those guys, and they'll probably be ongoing for the next few months. And by that time, hopefully we'll have some sort of draft design of, of a project. So that's moving along. I also met with ProSAP Chair Jesse Ansari and a designer for Acrametos Park. And took them around in the golf cart and kind of pointed at certain features and, and, and gave them some ideas of what we're looking for, for trail design and, and a configuration for, for the park. Also met with Boulder County reps about the, the town's agreement for a restroom in that area. And their input on water quality concerns for the reservoir. So that's going and it's a big project. And then to Larry's point, you know, we're pretty understaffed here at the bookworks too. And, and I got a lot going on and, and obviously there's a lot to happen in town. And so difficult to get anything done, and especially if this weather, May's been kind of, kind of a wet one this year. So we're really busy and not enough people to do it. But anyway, we're really still excited to build this park and I can't wait to get this process moving. But we're, we're spread pretty thin. That's about it. I think that's about it. So if there's anything you have questions on about my report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Chris?
I just had a quick one. Regarding the grant proposal, some of the businesses in town were worried about the possibility that the street might narrow with all the proposed improvements. Do you see that as a possibility?
Or the RMS grant that I just submitted?
The, no, no, not the crosswalk line, the, the big one.
Yeah. So, yeah, that possibility exists, but it's all conceptual. And until we get the funds awarded, and I'll say when we get the funds awarded, that's when the conversation can begin about, you know, what we really want and what we want that to look like. So I did propose some ideas and configurations of a potential sidewalk, maybe narrowing it. But maybe not too, and, and, you know, what looks good on paper, once you actually put an engineer's eyes to it and, and see how things fit, that's when you can really better understand how things.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah. Before we go any further, can I get a motion or can I get a motion to extend the meeting till 10:15?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Miranda?
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anyone other, any other questions for Chris?
I'd just like to thank Chris for all the work that Public Work has been doing. I've been seeing it around town. And I, I mean, at least on my part, I can say that I have an appetite to better fund your department. And so if we can find ways to better staff and find funding for that staff, I'm all about doing it. So that's something I'm willing to work on this year.
I appreciate that. And I appreciate Jonathan going to bat for the department earlier too. We, we try and, and we have a lot of work to do and a very short window to it. So, and we have big plans this year. So hopefully we get some stuff. We're actually pulling the asphalt machine out next week on Big Springs Drive to, to fix a problem area on Big Springs Drive. So we're excited to get that machine out and rolling. And, yeah, and I am talking to an applicant tomorrow without any real experience, but, but a very good energy. So I'm hoping to maybe add another member to my team. Hopefully by the end of the month, we'll see.
All right, thank you, Chris. Community Center Report, Dawn. Been hanging out with us for three hours now.
Yeah, I have. So, good evening, Mayor and Trustees. My report is in your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to mention that we had our first large event this past Sunday. Marion Reynolds Memorial was held at the community center, and it was very well attended. It was the first time we were able to gather and we weren't sure how we were gonna do the distancing. So the governor kind of saved us from having to make things very complicated. But people were still practicing distancing, everyone masked without, really without being asked, even though we were told we couldn't. We are awaiting the guidance from the county attorneys. Right now, all of our policy is still in place and we are asked, we are recommending and asking people to still wear their masks. And everyone has just been respectful and is being concerned for their neighbor, and it's been a joy to see. So I wanted to report that. The vaccine clinics have gone very, very well. And there will be one more, very brief one. At this point, we were told we were gonna get 50 J&amp;J. That's on June 1st. And then that will also be the people who have, need to get their second Moderna. The last of those folks will be attending that vaccine clinic. We're still doing testing. They don't know how much longer it's gonna go. The numbers are way down for the testing. Any questions? And I did want to point out, if you didn't get a chance to read the report, that we have expanded our hours. We're now open 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday and all the way till 8:00 on Wednesdays. Backdoor Theater will be opening Memorial Day weekend with a donation-only showing of Mulan. And then they have been meeting regularly to get their ducks in a row for the rest of their operations. So that's ongoing, but they're going to be coming back to us. So we're very pleased to, to have them return.
It's great to hear. Some, our strange version of normalcy returning to Netherlands.
Yes.
Any questions for Dawn? All right, well, I'mma tie mine up real here, real quick. It's in the packets. The big news being, of course, the Big Springs egress funding is included in the federal budget this year. This is not to say it's guaranteed by any means. It has to get through appropriations in the House and then the Senate. So there's still lots of work to do there. But Congressman Negoos is coming to town on Sunday as part of a district tour. He's popping around. We get him for one hour Sunday afternoon at 1:30. Right now, I know Tanya, I've been talking to her, to you, we're gonna be going with him. He wants to see Big Springs and understand the need and the, the options there. Other trustees, I know Rick Dur is gonna hopefully join us, and other trustees are, of course, welcome to join us. If you are interested in joining us, just let me know so that we can get this noticed and all, since that would be three trustees. And we gotta, gotta play by the rules, but that's kind of exciting. And other than that, I've just been doing a lot of stuff with the Envision 2030. And I just really want to call out, call out Miranda for organizing that over the last couple months. Well, Miranda and also Karen for attending all those meetings. I've only had to attend some of them. You guys have attended so many. And it's incredible work you guys have done doing that and looking forward to getting it all collated together and bringing the results of the project back to the Board of Trustees. So that's pretty much my report for tonight. Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer, do you like follow up? Jonathan, still on mute? Circle back to you in a minute here. I'll go, trustee Apt is not with us. Eric, Kums Ismail, I know you're here.
Yep, I've got nothing to add to the report. If anybody has any questions about it, though, I'm here to answer them.
All right, any questions for Eric? All right, trustee Corvallin.
Okay, I also don't have anything to add to my report. I like that. I, the Forside group is not meeting lately because of all the forest regeneration from all the fires there. Forside 2's been put on hold, and then we talked about the egress just now. And so I had a little walk with Dur and it's in the report with Jesse, it's some other people. And that's about it. RTD hasn't met in a while. I imagine that they'll be meeting soon. That's it.
All right, yeah, I'll be very curious. Let us know when RTD does meet, because I'm very curious how they're gonna try and come out of this and what that impact's gonna be on our ecopass.
Well, I mean, the last thing I had, it was gonna have to go back to the voters in '23, we decided. Not enough money to keep it going because of the reconfiguration of how RTD is billing. The more people use, the more we pay. But that could change and all that's up in the air, but yeah, I definitely will let you know.
Thanks, thanks.
You're welcome.
Trustee Danforth.
Nothing to report?
All right, and Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer?
No comment.
All right. Well, does anyone have any other business they would like to bring up this evening?
I would love to motion to adjourn.
I was, I saw you leaning in and I was about to call you for it. All right, a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I'll second, I'll second it.
Motion and a second, Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismail.
Yes.
All right, have a great evening, everyone. Thanks.
All right, good night.
See you all soon.
Thank you, Mayor.